Good evening. I'm Carolyn Ry, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM on this 13th day of December 2022. Thank you to those who have joined us here in person and those viewing online. Madam Clerk, would you please announce those school board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the Holland Road Annex Auditorium/School Board Room, we have Chairwoman Ry, Vice Chair Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
Thank you. I ask those present to now join me in a moment of silence. Please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, turning over the public awards and recognitions portion of the meeting to Vice Chair, Mrs. Melnick.
This evening, the School Board has the pleasure of recognizing Division students and staff who have been awarded or recognized during state, multi-state, or national competitions or events. Mrs. Hughes.
Our first honoree this evening is the Virginia Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance Middle School Teacher of the Year. Please welcome Great Neck Middle School Teacher Toni Splendor. Mr. Splendor shines as more than an average educator. In his 29 years of service, he has provided students with knowledge that will guide them to make a lifetime of healthy decisions. He monitors the latest health and fitness trends and works with his peers to support strong instruction in advanced PE classes where students create effective, personalized fitness plans. He creates an inclusive environment where all feel welcome, safe, and challenged. Congratulations, Mr. Splendor. We are proud of you.
Our next honoree this evening is John Marshall Center Middle School Teacher of the Year from Plaza Middle School. Please welcome Anthony Nobles. Each year, the John Marshall Center presents up to two awards to innovative educators for excellent teaching of the U.S. Constitution. Mr. Nobles was unanimously selected as the John Marshall Center's Middle School Teacher of the Year. He is an instructional leader who works to create learning experiences that bring civics to life. He embeds performance tasks into each unit. These include a mock Congress, a media story about the President, a research study about a local government issue, and a class selection. Not only does Mr. Noble do this within the walls of the classroom, but he encourages his students to engage with the community through service learning. Congratulations, Mr. Nobles. We are proud of you.
Our next honorees are the Class V State Field Hockey Champions from Cox High School. On November 13th, the Cox Field Hockey Team won the program's 24th state title and fifth consecutive title Cox Field Hockey has won, its fifth consecutive regional title. This year's win capped off one of the most incredible seasons ever played by Cox, led by Captains Addie Froelich, Elise Unger, Emerson Miller, and Lauren Sanford. This team lived up to their motto of heart by leaving everything on the field every game. The last three games leading up to the finals were won in either overtime or shootouts, a feat no other Cox team has ever accomplished. The team members are Emerson Miller, Elise Unger, Lauren Sanford, Addison Froelich, Josephine Savino, Sophia Birch, Megan Spear, Emily Tromley, Irma Gray Bailey, Addison Parker, Kathleen Harkin, Reeves Ceparichi, Reagan Cho, Rose Bannon, Mackenzie Durr, C. One Leathers, and Isabel Pardo. Congratulations to our Cox High School State Champions Team. We are so proud of you, Lady Falcons.
And good evening. The Virginia Department of Education Public Star Designation. Our next honorees are the 46 school, Virginia Beach schools that were named 2022-23 Virginia Purple Star Schools. Would all the principals and other representatives for our 2022-23 Purple Stars please come forward so we can honor your schools' achievements? The Virginia Department of Education presents the Purple Star Awards for demonstrating a major commitment to supporting students and families connected to our nation's military. This year, Purple Stars honorees are Elderhead Elementary, Elton Elementary, Bayside Sixth Grade Campus, Bayside Middle, Bayside High, Brookwood Elementary, Centerville Elementary, Christopher Farms Elementary, Corporate Landing Middle, Crease Elementary, Fairfield Elementary, First Colonial High School, Glenwood Elementary, Green Run Collegic, Green Run High, Harlem Elementary, Independence Middle, Kinsville Meadows Elementary, Kinsville Middle, Kings Grant Elementary, Landstown Elementary, Landstown High, Landstown Middle, Locksboro Middle, Locksboro Elementary, Lynn Haven Middle, Ocean Lakes Elementary, Ocean Lakes High, O'Donation School, Primbrook Elementary, Primbrook Meadows Elementary, Plaza Middle School, Princess Anne Elementary, Princess Anne Middle, Providence Elementary, Red Mill Elementary, Rosemount Forest Elementary, Salem High, Salem Middle, Strawberry Elementary, Tallwood High, Thalia Elementary, Thero Good Elementary, Three Oaks Elementary, Trent Wood Elementary, and the Virginia Beach Technical and Career Educational Center. These 46 honorees are the most ever for our district. These are now a total of 75 Virginia Beach and centers that have earned the Purple Star Designation. Congratulations to all of our Purple Heart Schools. We are proud of you. Let's please stand and give them a round of applause.
Madam Chair, before we conclude with our awards and recognitions this evening, we would like to recognize our outgoing board members. So I'll give them a moment to leave. Tonight, we are taking a moment to talk about the true meaning of the holiday season, which is a time of giving, or as we are celebrating tonight, the giving of time. The greatest gift one can give is the gift of oneself. After all, as Anne Frank wrote, "No one has ever become poor by giving." Tonight is a great time to think about and thank our colleagues for dedicating their time, their talent, and their energy to this board, this division, and most importantly, our students. In celebration, we would like to give each of you a clock so you can always remember that precious commodity you were willing to sacrifice over the course of your time of service. And from the bottom of our hearts, we thank you. In addition, we are presenting each outgoing member with a resolution. And so tonight, we will start with Mrs. Felton's resolution, read by Ms. Owens.
Thank you. I have the privilege to read from my dear friend, Ms. Felton. School Board Member, District 6, Beach. Whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools, in partnership with the entire community, will empower every student to become a lifelong learner who is a responsible, productive, and engaged citizen within the global community; and whereas the governance and oversight of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach and the leadership of the superintendent and staff, Virginia Beach City Public Schools is a world-class school division that continually strives to chart the course for our students; and whereas school board members have vital roles in preparing Virginia Beach City Public School students to be future leaders in our community and the world, and work tirelessly to address those needs; and whereas Sharon R. Felton has served with high distinction and outstanding dedication on the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, as the School Board Member, District 6, Beach, from January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2022; and whereas, prior to being elected to the School Board, Sharon R. Felton had a 30-year career as university librarian, a community leader, and an educational advocate before retiring. Sharon R. Felton has been a dedicated advocate for civil rights and educational equity for all Virginia Beach City Public School students and staff. And whereas, during her tenure as a School Board Member, Sharon R. Felton has served on many School Board Committees and Advisory Boards, including governance, planning and performance monitoring, legislative, and student discipline, among others. And whereas, her participation has enhanced the School Board's efforts in partnership with the entire community to empower every student to become a lifelong learner who is a responsible, productive, and engaged citizen within the global community, now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach commends and extends its grateful appreciation to Sharon R. Felton, School Board Member, for a job well done. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this School Board, and be it finally resolved that this original resolution be presented to Sharon R. Felton, School Board Member, District 6, Beach, in recognition of her service. This resolution is to be adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this 13th day of December 2022.
Mrs. Felton, this is your opportunity to offer any remarks you may choose.
Thank you, Chair Ry. I do appreciate this, and I do thank you for all that you all have said tonight. And I would just like to say that I realize that the work God had for me as a School Board Member would be accomplished through partnerships and others. After all, I have had the great fortune to work with many people during my tenure as a School Board Member. We accomplish a lot together. There is no complicated secret to working well with others. You just have to learn to appreciate them. How do you appreciate them? It's simple. First, you practice recognizing someone's value and contribution. Then, then and only then, you make a habit of telling them, "Thank you." To each of you here, I say, "I see you now, and I saw and felt the value placed on my life, and as we have worked together to ensure that the students and staff of Virginia Beach City Public Schools felt and seen, heard and cared for as we tended to the governance of the school division." From the bottom of my heart, I say, "Thank you." And this is not goodbye, just later. Thank you.
Mrs. Riggs.
Dorothy Holtz, School Board Member, District at Large. Whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools, in partnership with the entire community, will empower every student to become a lifelong learner who is a responsible, productive, and engaged citizen within the global community; and whereas, with the governance and oversight of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach and the leadership of the superintendent and staff, Virginia Beach City Public Schools is a world-class school division that continually strives to chart the course for our students; and whereas, school board members have vital roles in preparing Virginia Beach City Public School students to be future leaders in our community and the world, and work tirelessly to address those needs; and whereas, Dorothy Holtz has served with high distinction and outstanding dedication on the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, as the School Board Member at Large from January 1st, 2011 through December 31st, 2022. And whereas, prior to being elected to the School Board, Dorothy Holtz had a 30-year career as a teacher and computer specialist before retiring from Virginia Beach City Public Schools and becoming a School Board Member. Dorothy Holtz has been a dedicated advocate for teachers and employees and a strong believer in the potential for all students. And whereas, during her tenure as a School Board Member, Dorothy Holtz has served on many School Board Committees and Advisory Boards, including student discipline, planning and performance monitoring, and building utilization, among others; and whereas, her participation has enhanced the School Board's efforts in partnership with the entire community to empower every student to become a lifelong learner who is a responsible, productive, and engaged citizen within the global community. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach commends and extends its grateful appreciation to Dorothy Holtz, School Board Member, for a job well done. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this School Board, and be it finally resolved that this original resolution be presented to Dorothy Holtz, School Board Member at Large, in recognition of her service. This resolution is to be adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this 13th day of December 2022.
Thank you, everybody. It gives me great pleasure to be here tonight in front of all of you to accept this award as I complete my term on the board. When I first campaigned for office, my catchphrase was, "Continue the excellence." I didn't plan on fighting to change anything, as most candidates do, but as a retired teacher with 38 years of service, I was proud of the accomplishments of our school system, and I was delighted to be elected to this board to have a hand in its future direction. It has truly been a challenging and eventful 12 years. Yes, thank you for the voting public who gave me the privilege and the opportunity to serve on this particular board. I would also like to thank several of my colleagues, my teammates, who have worked so diligently, especially in the past three years, to keep our students safe in the face of unforeseen hardships and obstacles. And you know who you are. A huge thank you is also due to Dr. Spence and his administrative staff for their selfless dedication and knowledgeable guidance. Your high level of commitment to our Virginia Beach schools has made my job on this particular board much, much easier than it might have been. And lastly, I would like to reaffirm my strong support for public education, public education for all children with no exceptions. And as I stated 12 years ago, continue the excellence in our Virginia Beach school system. Thank you so much, everybody. I was going to say I'll frame it, but it's already been done.
Mrs. Manning.
It's an honor for me to read this recognition for School Board Member Laura Hughes, School Board Member at Large. Whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools, in partnership with the entire community, will empower every student but to become a lifelong learner who is a responsible, productive, and engaged citizen within the global community; and whereas, through the governance and oversight of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach and the leadership of the superintendent and staff, Virginia Beach City Public Schools is a world-class school division that continually strives to chart the course for our students; and whereas, school board members have vital roles in preparing Virginia Beach City Public School students to be future leaders in our community and the world, and work tirelessly to address those needs. Whereas Laura K. Hughes has served with high distinction and outstanding dedication on the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, as a School Board Member at Large from January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2022. And whereas, during her tenure as a School Board Member, Laura Hughes has served on many School Board Committees and Advisory Boards, including policy review, building utilization, and School Board Discipline, among others. Laura Hughes' focus on the importance of fundamental educational skills and parental involvement is well-recognized. And whereas, her participation has enhanced the School Board's efforts in partnership with the entire community to empower every student to become a lifelong learner who is a responsible, productive, and engaged citizen within the global community. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach commends and extends its grateful appreciation to Laura K. Hughes, School Board Member at Large, for a job well done. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this School Board, and be it finally resolved that this original resolution be presented to Laura K. Hughes, School Board Member, in recognition of her service. This resolution is to be adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this 13th day of December 2022.
Well, I didn't expect this, and I don't have anything prepared, but this has been quite a ride the last four years. I remember seeing a TV show when I was a kid, and there was a comment made in there that always stood out. It said, "Let every man be my teacher." And I hope that that's the way that I conduct myself and that we teach every, you know, teach every student. I don't always agree with everybody up here, but I have to tell you, I've learned something from everybody up here. And I hope that all of, all board members, students, staff, all of us, need to conduct our lives where everyone that you pass is your teacher. You're going to learn something from them, and the community is going to be better for it. And I thank all of you.
And now Carolyn T. Ry, School Board Chair and School Board Member, District 5, Lynn Haven. Whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools, in partnership with the entire community, will empower every student to become a lifelong learner who is a responsible, productive, and engaged citizen within the global community; and whereas, through the governance and oversight of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach and the leadership of the superintendent and staff, Virginia Beach City Public Schools is a world-class division that continually strives to chart the course for our students; and whereas, school board members have vital roles in preparing Virginia Beach City Public School students to be future leaders in our community and the world, and work tirelessly to address those needs. And whereas Carolyn T. Ry has served with high distinction and outstanding dedication on the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, as the School Board Member, District 5, Lynn Haven, from January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2022. And whereas Carolyn T. Ry served as School Board Chair from January 2020 until December 31st, 2022. And whereas during her tenure as a School Board Member, Carolyn T. Ry has served on many School Board Committees and Advisory Boards, including governance, audit, policy review, student discipline, among others. Carolyn T. Ry's dedication to detail and addressing the concerns of staff and constituents is well-recognized. And whereas her participation has enhanced the School Board's efforts in partnership with the entire community to empower every student to become a lifelong learner who is a responsible, productive, and engaged citizen within the global community. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach commends and extends its grateful appreciation to Carolyn T. Ry, School Board Chair and School Board Member, District 5, Lynn Haven, for a job well done. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this School Board, and be it finally resolved that this original resolution be presented to Carolyn T. Ry, School Board Chair, in recognition of her service. This resolution is to be adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this 13th day of December 2022.
Well, even after a month to reflect on my eight years of service as the Lynn Haven School Board Representative and three years as Chair, it remains a challenge to convey in words what this honor has meant to me personally. The opportunity to affect policy and approve and oversee a budget the size of ours, to work with a leadership staff second to none, to visit schools and witness the learning taking place in our classrooms, to partner with parents through attendance at PTA meetings and school events, to engage with citizens and parents and teachers at our public meetings and through email exchanges and phone calls, to proudly represent our board and division at community and school-sponsored special events, to offer special recognitions for staff and students at School Board meetings, and to attend graduation ceremonies and thus celebrate the culmination of all our efforts. I do have a few shout-outs, so bear with me for another moment. Beginning with the superintendent office, I'll remain deeply indebted to our three office associates, Susan Kype, Terri Skidmore, and our dear School Board Clerk Regina Tonyato, for always being available when needed. To John Sutton, the man with three job titles, School Board Attorney Ms. Camille Lennetti, Chief of Staff Dr. Don Robertson, and Superintendent Aaron Spence, your leadership and expertise have helped me grow professionally and personally. And I do feel former Chief of Staff Mark Bergen belongs in this mix as well. Former School Board colleagues Leonard Tango, Betsy Taylor, Ashley McLeod, and Long Term Chair Dan Edwards taught me much in my early years on the board. Immediate past President, School Board Chair Beverly Anderson helped make my leadership transition seamless. And to Vice Chair Kimberly Melnick, you have been a trusted wingman, or should I say wingwoman, through both accomplishments and challenges. To all my colleagues that sit among us, thank you for your unwavering commitment to our students and your passion for public education. My final thanks are saved for the three people dearest to me, my husband Ken and daughter Dana, joining us this evening in the audience, and our son Daniel with us in spirit from Denver. You have all been my rock, and I know I will always have your vote. I wish this new board and Virginia Beach City Public Schools continued success- I wish this new board and Virginia Beach City Public Schools continued success as you face the challenges that remain and build on our previous successes, because I truly believe together you will continue to lift all our students. Thank you.
Now, Mrs. Rye, the concept about giving till it hurts really applies in your case. In the course of your time on this board as the founding chair of the policy committee to the chair of the board, you have always shown a real generosity and have embodied the act of giving it all. We are making, we make a living by what we get, and we make a life by what we give. So, thank you. I would like to present to you on behalf of your colleagues this gavel. And inscribed on the base, it says Carolyn T. Rye, Chair, School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, January 2020 to December 2022, for believing in our mission, offering invaluable support, and leading our path to success. Thank you, Carolyn, for showing us the joy of giving and for your commitment to Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Thank you.
So, that concludes that portion of the meeting. And now we move on to adoption of the agenda. Colleagues, are there any modifications to the agenda as presented? Mrs. Melnick?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to add the resolutions of service for Mrs. Holtz, Mrs. Felton, Mrs. Hughes, and Mrs. Rye to the consent agenda item 17E.
I think we can accommodate that. Oh, yes, so a second?
Second.
Jessica.
Jessica.
And given that, assuming that's the only modification, okay, then all in favor of the agenda as revised, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote, the motion did pass.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of meeting minutes from the November 22nd regular school board meeting, are there any modifications, colleagues? Hearing then, all in favor, show a
Point of order.
A motion to approve, Mrs. Riggs, and a second, Mrs. Franklin. All in favor, show a raised hand.
We have 10 ayes.
And all abstaining due to my absence from the meeting.
Thank you, we have 10 ayes, one abstention, the motion did pass.
Thank you. That brings us to the public hearing on fiscal year 2023 school operating budget and fiscal year 2023-24 through fiscal year 28-29 capital improvement program and public comments. The school board will now hear public comment, beginning with these two budgets, and then public comments on matters relevant to pre-K to 12 public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the school board and school division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the school board clerk prior to noon today. Speakers are responsible for being in chambers or online when called to speak, and if not present when called to do so, the board at its sole discretion may allow the speaker at the end of the public comment session. As always, the school board invites the public to submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you first introduce, would you introduce the first speaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speakers on the public hearing on the budget will be Paula Chang and then Dan Chang.
Welcome.
Ms. Rye, my wife will not be speaking, and I will not take her three minutes. Okay, I want to thank CFO Pate and her staff for putting this superintendent's budget package together. I have done a quick review of the budget, and a few things stand out, but I'd like to mention only a couple. From 2019 until today, there has been almost 5% decrease in the number of VB students, while the cost per student has increased over 10% from 13K to 17K and still climbing. For the upcoming budget, Superintendent Spence is requesting 1.3 billion, of which 872 million is direct day-to-day operations. Of this, 45 million is administrative costs, that is a large number. Of course, the construction costs of CIP is in a totally different budget. In this budget, the budget and finance department receive a large increase, as did the superintendent's budget, superintendent's office. As yet, we all know that certain sections of the VB school employees are not recipients of such increases, specifically bus drivers, food service, custodial staff, many making $10 to $11 per hour. On the drive-in, I did notice on the billboard out there that they are hiring school board custodians, not school board, school custodians and food service. School board Laura Hughes, school board member Laura Hughes mentioned recently reminded us that VB CPS is not its buildings, but its people. So I looked at the budget with her statement in mind and was disappointed to see that no real details are presented for increasing hourly wages for these key employees. Just a comment to meet the annual state minimum wage benchmark goals of a minimum of $15 per hour by 2016, excuse me, 2026. Not a high goal when a new state-of-the-art buildings are being built and administrative departments are fully funded. No wonder there are 307 vacancies. Teachers have the teachers' union, the VBEA, to champion their pay and benefits. It is up to Superintendent Spence to champion these key members of the VB CPS team. What is being done to help these valuable workers, Dr. Spence, as this has been an ongoing issue. The new school board needs to, needs to take a very detailed look at what the superintendent's proposing. These are our taxpayer dollars, and there is a fiduciary responsibility to spend tax dollars wisely in a manner that prioritizes what is best for the education of the students.
30 seconds.
The school board will be responsible, the new school board will be responsible for setting requirements which prioritize in line with real needs of our students. Superintendent Spence is accountable to this board, and the board is accountable to the citizens. That is what this election was about. We are counting on them not to just rubber stamp what is presented. Thank you.
We will now move on to our student speakers.
A respectful reminder to please refrain, refrain from applause with speakers, thank you.
Our student speakers are Ansley Shubridge, Emily Labarre, then Ari Benjamin Serja.
Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, school board members, and Dr. Spence. I want to start by thanking you for your service. Whether you are leaving the board this month, are newly elected, or are continuing on in the new year, your commitment to the students of Virginia Beach City Public Schools is appreciated. I may be biased, as I have been in Virginia Beach my entire life, but I think we have a pretty good thing going on here. I am here tonight as a citywide SCA chairman. It is a privilege for me to hold this position, as it is a representation of all high school students in Virginia Beach. While I lead at Calum and I'm focused on the issues we have, I appreciate the opportunity to support all high school students and work with my fellow citywide officers to lift all communities. It has been a goal of mine to connect our high schools to support each other instead of feeling isolated or limited in what we can accomplish. As you begin the new term in January and consider who will lead you, I hope you will be thinking about all students and our various needs and representations. It does not always come down to experience, because sometimes it is just about who will do the most good for those you represent. I also have to remember sometimes that while I was selected by Calum to be SCA president and Virginia Beach Leadership Workshop to be citywide chair, I still represent the people not just from Calum and those who were unable to be present at VBLW, and my decisions impact all of them. Furthermore, I hope that my classmates who identify as cis straight or LGBTQ, and those who more specifically identify as non-binary, transgender, or other pronouns of their choice, feel supported and safe in our division and in your care. I hope that as you all move forward in policy discussion, like you will later with Policy 611, that you do not forget these students, and that you try to support all of us as best as you can. Leadership is about taking risks and challenging the status quo. Leaders motivate others to achieve something new and better. Leaders build consensus through participation. I invite you to join us at any of our citywide meetings. Students would love the opportunity to ask questions and share what we see as working well in our division. I also hope in the new year, this school board will consider adding student representatives to participate as part of the school board to continue putting students first. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Emily Labarre, and I'm the president of First Colonial High School's Gender Sexuality Alliance. Parents, students, teachers, and graduates alike have been speaking out against the model policies at these meetings for months. We've been here since September, and we don't plan to let this go. It would be so much easier for me to stay home and to work on my calculus homework, or for us to keep our heads down and not say anything, but it wouldn't be right. We have a moral obligation, just as you have a moral obligation. Your position means you're uniquely equipped to protect your students. You're responsible for thousands of students in this district, including transgender students. The 2022 model policies would limit the availability of counseling services to students and prevent teachers from using students' preferred names and pronouns without written consent from parents. Beyond the limited amount of research that went to forming these model policies, they pose a serious threat to our district amid a devastating mental health epidemic. They will further ostracize students who are already vulnerable. According to a study from Ohio State University published in 2022, up to 82% of transgender individuals have considered suicide, and 40% have attempted. Additionally, the model policies put teachers in a very difficult position. My friend Alex said it best, this will force student, this will force teachers to choose between respecting the basic rights of their students or following the mandates of the Virginia Department of Education. The policies themselves are in a very precarious situation legally. They violate both case precedent and codified law, including the Virginia Human Rights Act. These policies are poorly constructed and ignore the needs of the districts that want to enact them. Every student deserves to be treated with respect, compassion, and dignity. This is not a partisan issue. This is an issue of doing what's best for both teachers and students. This is an issue of avoiding worsening the teacher shortage in a pre-existing mental health crisis. This is an issue of doing what's right, regardless of party ties. The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times
30 seconds.
... and controversy. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ari Benjamin Serja, then Morgan Elizabeth Lynch, and then Alana Spencer.
Welcome.
Welcome. Good afternoon, members of the school board. My name is Ari Serja, and I'm a student in First Colonial High School, and I'm here to speak against the Virginia Department of Education's model policies about transgender students. There is no tomorrow. Those four words wholeheartedly describe the situation at hand, not only today, but ever since the Virginia Department of Education released its model policies that neglect and degrade the existence of LGBTQ youth within our district. Those policies actively compromise the aim of this school board to create classrooms that have themes of a safe environment but are also paired with inclusivity and diversity. With the amount of retaliation and hate that is spewed against the LGBTQ daily, specifically the shooting in Colorado Springs serving as a tragic and more recent example, I urge this school board to stand and rise against the powers that be to make sure that every day, when a student enters the halls of any school, they don't fear a toxic and unwelcoming environment, but are instead joyous to see what the day brings and always know they're accepted by not only their faculty and teachers, but their peers as well. These policies, which mandate the dead naming and legalize the bullying of LGBTQ students, send a bold and crystal-clear message that transgender students are not valued and not accepted within their school community. This can easily lead to feelings of isolation and marginalization for these students, hindering their academic and personal growth. This does not tell students that their perspectives are invited, recognized, and esteemed. It tells them that their schools do not seek growth, are not open to change, and don't value differences. Also, without support from their peers and teachers, this can silently lead to an unengaged or unenthused student during the learning process, allowing for their full potential to not even be eclipsed in the slightest. Additionally, the neglect of transgender students by these policies can also harm teachers within the school district. Teachers employed within VB CPS are left with nothing, since they can no longer properly advocate for their transgender and LGBTQ students, leaving them to fail at creating a warm and welcoming environment for every student that walks into their door. Imagine a toxic environment that excludes and marginalizes a section of students daily due to discriminatory policies that has yet to be challenged despite the values of this school board that they definitely promote. There will be no need to imagine if the school board in front of us refuses to act against the hate conveyed by the Virginia Department of Education. I leave this school board with a quote from Ahmaud Ghandi, "Be the change you wish to see in this world."
30 seconds.
I hope these words, along with the simple look back to how many students and fellow community members over the past several weeks have spoken against this policy, I hope they light a bulb and inspire the board to make the changes to keep these schools a great place and not ones that harm the potential of students daily. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Morgan Elizabeth Lynch, Alana Spencer, Natalie Gonzalez.
Good evening. My name is Morgan Lynch, and I'm a senior at the Cox High School and ambassador Girl Scout with Troop 13 in Virginia Beach. I'm here tonight to encourage the school board to welcome the opportunity to have Girl Scout troops meet in our city public schools, and to allow marketing of Girl Scouts so girls can join a local troop. Girl Scouts gives girls an outlet for their interests and provides opportunities to explore activities related to STEM, camping and outdoors, civic engagement, community service, and more. These experiences build girls of courage, confidence, and character that become future leaders. My mom started my troop 13 years ago by handing out flyers in kindergarten classes at Thurgood Elementary. Over the past 13 years, Girl Scouts has provided me with incredible opportunities, including traveling to England, Switzerland, and France. I also participated in the 100th anniversary of Girl Scouts in Washington, DC, and visited the home of our founder Juliette Gordon Low in Savannah, Georgia. Through Girl Scouts, I have participated in numerous legislation days in Richmond, where I was able to speak with our local congressional leaders in the House and Senate, as well as speak to the governor while advocating for Girl Scout programming. These experiences inspired me to start a junior civic league for my Bay Lake Pines neighborhood. I have been able to learn and grow into a leader as a national Girl Scout delegate and a member of the Girl Scouts of the Colonial Coast Board of Directors. Finally, I have earned all three of the highest awards, bronze, silver, and gold, by conducting community service projects for local organizations. My bronze award was creating a playground buddy bench for my troop at my elementary school. My silver and gold projects were for St. Mary's Home for Disabled, where I created an ability garden and an outdoor gardening space for their residents to grow flowers, succulents, and herbs. I also wrote two books about gardening for them. Girl Scouts helped me to realize so many opportunities and has taught me problem-solving, teamwork, confidence, and public speaking, exploration, and community outreach, all while creating lifetime friendships. I know the skills I have learned from Girl Scouts will serve me well in my college and future. Thank you for your time, and I hope you will continue to allow Girl Scouts to meet and recruit girls from Virginia Beach City Public Schools.
Our next speaker is Alana Spencer, Natalie Gonzalez, and then Jacob Cruz.
Good evening, board members and members-elect. I'm Alana Spencer, and I am here again to speak against the 2022 model transgender student policies. Tonight, I'll be expressing my concerns with the legality and efficacy of these policies. We have previously stated some of these arguments, but we would like to reiterate them for the members-elect who may not be aware. First, we must consider the Virginia Human Rights Act. The VHRA prohibits discrimination based on gender identity. Regardless of your thoughts on the model policies, it cannot be denied that it treats transgender students differently than others. No sister or student would need written permission to go by their middle name nor nickname. No one would demand a written request for Alexander to just go by Alex. Yet this policy would make trans students drown in that red tape. Second, we have to take a look at Tinker versus DeMoy. Tinker versus DeMoy was a landmark Supreme Court case in which high school students were suspended for were suspended for wearing black armbands to protest the Vietnam War. The court ruled in favor of the students, stating that their actions were protected by the First Amendment. The decision set the precedent that students do not shed their constitutional rights to freedom of speech or expression at the schoolhouse gate. This principle is especially relevant when it comes to the rights of transgender students. Just as any other student has the right to express themselves through their clothing, hairstyle, or nickname, transgender students also have the right to express their gender identity in a myriad of ways, including their name. The freedom to have a name other than the one you were born with is not only constitutionally, sorry, not only essential for the well-being of trans students, but also constitutionally protected. Finally, we have to consider the efficacy of the 2022 model guidelines. It provides zero research or references to its conclusions and lists zero contributors other than the Department of Education itself. The 2021 policy is the exact opposite. Twenty different high-quality resources, including the American Academy of Pediatrics and the American Psychiatric Association, and the Office of Civil Rights, are all referenced and all support the current policy. The current policy also considers a variety of differing perspectives, those of which contain a group of thirty-four educators, government officials, medical professionals, and students, all listed as contributors. I ask this board how we're supposed to replace a policy that was thoroughly researched and reviewed with one that couldn't even make it through peer review day in a high school English class. I urge you to pick the policy that's supported by-
Thirty seconds.
-supported by the courts, supported by research, and supported by your students. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Natalie Gonzalez, Jacob Cruz, and then Alex Estratt.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Gonzalez and I'm here to speak against the model trans policy. So far, I've taken a more impersonal approach to my speeches and while I think those speeches can be effective, I don't want to seem emotionless or like I don't care because the exact opposite is true. It's easy for me to get caught up in the busyness of adult life. I'm forever busy with filling my car's tank with gas, going to work, figuring out what to eat for dinner, and what time I'm going to bed, and as I get closer and closer to graduating high school, it's easy for me to forget what it was like when I first entered it. I think everyone who's ever attended public school would agree that students act differently at school than they do at home, and that's not a bad thing. Not only does it give students a space to learn and grow as individuals, but it gives its most vulnerable students the support their families do not. You cannot deny that many students, especially trans students, come from unhappy homes. You cannot deny that for these students, schools are more than just a place you do math and write essays in. If this were true, we wouldn't have guidance counselors or clubs, and we wouldn't have advisory blocks dedicated to social emotional learning. For these students, schools are the only refuge they have from their home lives. For me, school is where I went when I didn't want to be home. School is where I went before I could drive to my brother's place and spend the night, and it was where I went when I had nowhere else to go. For seven hours a day, five days a week, I could go to school and know that, even if only for a little bit, things are going to be okay. When I think about this policy, I think of my friends. I think of the people I grew up with, who I've known since middle school or even before, the people who made school better than home, the people I knew and loved before, during, and after their transitions, people who, like me, depended on school to give them what home could not, and I've seen how happy they become when they can be themselves. The small act of calling someone by the correct name and pronouns does so much. It allows them to thrive, to come out of their shell, and to grow into the people they were always meant to be. To call my friends by anything else would be wrong. I would never out a friend or any trans person, not just because it could put them in harms way, but because it is wrong. It is not my place to reveal something so personal, something someone trusted me to keep private to their parents or to anyone else. It is not my place, or the Department of Education's place, to say that schools can be a safe place for all students unless you're trans. We have given countless speeches on why this policy is so harmful and we will continue to do so until we are certain they won't be implemented. I urge you once again to reject-
Thirty seconds.
...the policy. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jacob Cruz, then Alex Estratt.
Good evening, board members and members-elect. For months, myself and my peers have come out to speak against the 2022 model trans student policies, but today, instead of just talking about court cases or stats, I'd simply like to speak to the importance of our counselors. To illustrate this, I have a story about a day that a counselor was extremely important to me, October twelfth, to be specific. On October twelfth, I had to wake up very early so that my mom and I could drive all the way up to Naval Hospital in Norfolk. I was scheduled to have a cardiac MRI that day. A cardiac MRI is like a normal MRI, but it's just worse in every single way. You're stuck in a tube with barely enough room to wiggle your toes, just like any normal MRI, but for a cardiac MRI, you're stuck there for over two hours. And the thing that really makes these cardiac MRIs a special experience is the fact you have to hold your breath basically the entire time. Every minute or so, you're gonna get a break, right, because they don't want you to suffocate. But whenever the technician needs to take a scan, you have to be holding your breath because they're taking an MRI of your heart, right? Like, it needs to be a clear scan for them. So I left the hospital, understandably stressed out of my mind from this appointment, and I was starving because I hadn't eaten since breakfast and it had been hours since then. This is the point in the day where my mom informed me that we didn't have enough time to go get food if we wanted to get me back to school on time. I was not thrilled about that. So at about twelve o'clock on October twelfth, I walked into school hungry, tired, and stressed out of my mind from that MRI, and I was stressed from the argument that I just had with my mom about whether or not we had enough time to get lunch. And that's when Ms. Mayo saw me in the hallway, my counselor. Counselor who's beloved by all the studies in the Legal Studies Academy, or students in the Legal Studies Academy at First Colonial. In spite of my best brave face, she knew something was wrong, so she took me into her office, she asked me what was going on, and I could get about halfway through my answer before I was just crying my eyes out. That day, Ms. Mayo, just like so many guidance counselors across our city, she was not just a form-filling machine or a schedule-maker, she was the reason that I got through the day. She lifted me out of the storm that I was weathering, she gave me the assurance that I was gonna be able to get through this day, and then she walked me down to a vending machine where she got me a bag of salt and vinegar chips so that I could not be quite so hungry. I was starving and she fed me. That is literally the level of, or that is how essential our counselors can be at times. See, now, you can debate all day long about the merits of the 2022 model policies, but there is one thing that we should all agree on. Every student should be able to see one of our amazing guidance counselors that we have in our schools, no matter what. These policies we fight against seek to take that away from the students that need it most.
Thirty seconds.
The 2022 model policies allow parents to opt their students out of guidance counseling, and that is simply not acceptable. If we're going to allow students to be opted out of counseling, we might as well allow students to be opted out of the teaching staff as well. That's how essential they are. Every student, especially trans students, need a counselor who will support them, just like how Ms. Mayo supported me. Any policy that keeps students from counselors is dangerous and we won't stand for it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alex Estratt.
Evening. To the members of the school board, I would like to thank you for having me speak again. For the new members-elect here today or listening from home, I would like to congratulate you on your hard-fought victories and would like to tell you a little bit more about me, along with the group we have brought here today. My name is Alex Estratt, and this is the sixth meeting in a row that I've attended and spoken out against the Virginia Department of Education's model policies on transgender students. My fellow speakers before me have articulated the concerns of this policy related to its effects on teachers, students, counselors, as well as its legality. Instead of adding on to what they said, I want to tell you a little bit more about myself and my experience. I have always been a Republican and a conservative. I have supported Republican ideals and Republican candidates all of my life. Matter of fact, I supported and still support Governor Youngkin. And just last month, I placed my first-ever vote for Congresswoman-elect Jen Kiggins. However, before I'm a Republican, before I am a conservative, I am a friend and I am a human. I have seen the worry on the faces of my transgender and non-binary classmates when discussing this proposed policy, knowing that they would either have to come out to their parents who will disown them and throw them out of the house, or they would have to listen to their teachers calling them by a name which they feel uncomfortable being called. I have seen teachers wince at the idea that they would be forced to deadname and misgender the students that they have spent the whole school year caring for and forming close relationships with. I have seen counselors stressed about having to shift their focus from college recommendations and school schedules to finding new ways to try and avoid outing students and figuring out which students they are allowed to talk to and which students they'd be forced to turn away. This is not an issue of politics. This is not an issue of parents' rights. This is an issue of human rights and human decency. This is about the right of students to freely express themselves in school and to feel safe in their school building. To see all of this potential harm being done by one misguided policy has led me to stand for what is right, even if it may be unpopular to my party. This is why I, along with the diverse group of speakers we have had here today, as well as those who have spoken in the past, will not stop fighting until we know our schools are a safe place for all students. We will continue to come to every meeting and do whatever it takes for this board to take action and protect its students and reject these model policies. Thank you.
That was our last student speaker. Our next speakers will be Lisa Vorga, Lynn Schultz, Kristin Herrera.
Good evening. Thank you Superintendent Spence and members of the school board for allowing me to speak today. And congratulations to those of you who are elected and sworn in tonight. You have taken on a big responsibility to the students, educators, and staff of the Virginia Beach school system, and it won't be easy. And in the way we are trusting you to make choices that help move us in positive directions, I ask that you trust us, the members of this community, who come up here and use research and facts and credible sources to support our time at this podium. I am the executive director of the Virginia Library Association, which represents about five thousand public and university librarians and library staff in the state, and I live in Virginia Beach. I have been working on library issues for about twenty-five years and have been intimately involved in intellectual freedom issues for the majority of that time, which is part of the reason I was so surprised when our city and our school system became a national focus of outrageous behavior at school board meetings. In the beginning, I didn't come forward to speak because I had faith that the people elected to a school board would be wise enough not to allow bad behavior at meetings to begin to guide policy and procedure. And then I found out that behavior was being encouraged and organized by a member of this board, and I was stunned. How someone purportedly interested in education would take items out of context and make judgments on it, based on it, ignoring entirely the Supreme Court decision Miller v. California from nineteen seventy-three and creating a dangerous rift between members of the school board and members of the community was either purposeful or willfully ignorant. To then continue to ignore legal decisions like Pico versus Island Trees and create mountains of work for educators and library media specialists, all in the interest of flipping this school board, is atrocious and a terrible chapter of this school system's history. Probably the most amazing part of this is that even after Ms. Manning sat in a courtroom in this very city and watched an argument by her friends be picked apart and destroyed by a judge, she still continued her campaign of misinformation because she hoped to have some influence over who was sitting in front of us next year. In the current climate, educators are afraid to get up here and speak in defense of themselves and their students for fear of retribution. This harms and diminishes conversation and civil discourse, something we are hoping kids will learn when they attend Virginia Beach City Public Schools. I hope this board will be able to steer away from that and make this a space in which our teachers feel comfortable speaking up and speaking out. Fear is not a way to lead. As you get settled in your new roles, I encourage you-
Thirty seconds.
...to seek out the experts, the people who do this job day in and day out, those with experience in classrooms and libraries, those who actually read the entire book, those who seek to educate our students, those who seek to support our educators and librarians, and not those who are sitting there holding up signs. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lynn Schultz, then Kristin Herrera, then Dan Chang.
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Lynn Schultz. I reside in District Six. I'm a former teacher with the Virginia Beach Public Schools. I'm a retired senior lecturer at ODU in the field of teacher preparation, the mother of four graduates of Virginia Beach Public Schools, and the grandparent of three current Virginia Beach Public School students. I'm here tonight to address my concerns about equity issues facing our students and teachers, as addressed on the Student First Virginia website. As curricula get discussed, reviewed, and voted upon, my concern is today's public school children will not have the opportunity to appreciate the challenges of all who have come before them. For example, I am old enough to remember white-only entrances and water fountains, and robed Klansmen recruiting openly on a busy street in my city. I remember high school boys roughing up those they thought were gay in dark hallways of my high school. I was with my husband and his cousins tracing the route of their Jewish grandparents, from a high-end flat in Frankfurt to an apartment in Amsterdam, to their death in the Sobor Extermination Camp in nineteen forty-three. These are a part of our history. We must be honest when we acknowledge transgressions of the past and look for a better way forward. I hope the Virginia Beach School Board, teachers, parents, and students will work together for a full retelling of our past, the good and the bad. We are a wonderful city, state, and nation that has accomplished much, and we are strong enough to tell the truth about our past and look forward to building a more compassionate future. I appeal to you to elect leadership that will do just that.
Our next speaker is Kristin Herrera, Dan Chang, and then Paula Chang.
Good evening. Thank you for your time and attention. I'm a second-grade teacher here in Virginia Beach, and I'm in my fourth year of teaching. I would like to discuss the concerns that I have for teacher retention and concerns regarding the bonus options that will be voted on during this meeting. I'm deeply saddened and disappointed by the possibility of our fellow colleagues not receiving this bonus. As an elementary teacher, my students are not receiving the additional support of tutors that this extra funding may go to. The support my students are receiving comes directly from me and all other employees in the building, including nurses, office staff, bus drivers, and custodians. Elementary students are experiencing academic learning loss, but also severe emotional learning, social emotional learning loss. Non-instructional staff interact with our students in the mornings, at lunch, in the hallways, and various other times when they're not in the classroom. These staff members are critical parts of the student's day and their interactions support their social emotional learning. Teaching the whole child is a team effort from everyone in the building and non-instructional staff should be treated as valued members of the team. I'm also concerned by the efforts to retain our teachers. Many of my colleagues have left the district and even the profession in the past few years. Based on conversations with current colleagues, there are several more debating leaving this year, myself included. We hear from our other teachers in Norfolk, Chesapeake, and Suffolk who have higher pay or two full weeks of winter break, or once-a-month staff days or long weekends. I understand that last year, we had a plan to help prevent teacher burnout and had money added to our pay for the months of January through June. However, after a six-percent raise, my paychecks are significantly less now than they were in January. I'm currently working a second job and have so every year that I've taught. After four years of needing to work another job to get a supplemental income to be able to live comfortably in our economy, as any professional should be able to do, I'm burnt out and understand this is not sustainable for the future. Working two jobs through and after a pandemic, even though I'm an educated and qualified professional, has greatly affected my mental and physical health, along with the well-being of my family. I love teaching, I love my students, and this is my passion. But I've burnt out and I struggle to go into work each day, and I haven't even made it to the fifth year of my career. With that in mind, what is our district gonna do to encourage teachers to return? How is whatever our plan is going to affect my daily work-life to make sure my workload is manageable? We're constantly reminded about student, social, and emotional needs. What about our teachers' social and emotional needs? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dan Chang, Paula Chang, and then David Cutchins.
Welcome.
Congratulations to the new school board who were sworn in today. Voters in 2021 told Ms. Vice Chair Melnick they didn't like what was going on in the schools. Voters reiterated last month for Mrs. Ry, Mrs. Melnick, and Mrs. Felton. Voters will remind you again in 2024. It should be, it should humble Mrs. Melnick to look at the results of her election in District Two. Her district does not approve her actions. Voters reminded the board of what we have all tried to say. You all work for us. You didn't accept this and you treated we, the people, your superiors with contempt and disrespect. This board and Dr. Spence actively worked against we, the people. So we are in the process of firing any of you, even the new board, who failed to accept the hierarchy dislaid out in the U.S. Constitution. The Constitution, which today we heard the new board members swear to, swore an oath to that. It is time for Dr. Spence to understand that for the length of time he remains an employee of VBCPS, he's just that, our employee. This correct understanding should be accepted by Dr. Robertson and the entire administrative staff. Your time of arrogance and bullying toward your bosses is through. It is time to do what you were hired to do for K-12- It is time to do what you were hired to do for K-12. Educate students to think critically. Allow them to develop their minds. Do not shape them through indoctrination. This is the reason that the school board is technically nonpartisan. Citizens do not want our children to be political footballs, which they have been in the last few years. You doubt this? Look at last November's election results. Examine District Ten. Kathleen Brown's election demonstrated that citizens and parents want their children educated. District Ten, like all districts, are tired of the politics in VB CPS. District Two also highlights this reality. Amy Soleris worked hard, ceaselessly sending the message that our schools should be about quality of education students receive, not politics. With both political sides and the VBEA working against her, she came within 270 votes of unseating Mrs. Melnick. I'm grateful for Mrs. Soleris and hope Mrs. Melnick heeds the message. Let me say a deep thank you for Mrs. Hughes, who leaves the board tonight after unwavering service to our schools. For those who did not know, Mrs. Hughes selflessly chose not to run in her district, assists Mrs. Weems. I look forward to seeing her back in 2024.
Our next speaker is Paula Chang, David Cutchins, and then Eli Osborne.
Good evening. Good evening. First of all, I will say this. My daughter sends her regards to you, Mrs. Rye. And I have some different views of what has gone on in the school board meetings in the past couple of years. I'll say congratulations to our new school board members. Virginia Beach wisely chose a much more balanced board. The campaigns were difficult, but the real work of removing the layers and layers of indoctrination has just begun and will be difficult. It will require constant vigilance by parents and citizens, and we will be here. Over the last two years, what I saw was that we watched this board and this administration squander an opportunity to have led through COVID with real greatness, instead choosing to be sheep, taking direction from political parties and unions while squandering the education of Virginia Beach students on political opportunism over your actual duty for their education. Thus, what I remember of this board will be layers of administrative bureaucracy and a decline in student behavior and performance, the pretense that online education was sufficient, closed schools, pressured staff, forced and useless masking, silence and bullying of citizens instead of listening to them, including those of colors who opposed your ideas, those with disabilities whom you tried to humiliate, those speaking passionately even today pretending they were inappropriate, by you pretending they were inappropriate in decorum while closing your eyes to your own lack of decorum, locking citizens out of meetings and parents out of their children's schools, lying to the press claiming concerned citizens were a threat, emphasizing social issues over education. You tried, I think, but failed to divide parents and citizens politically. And again, I would say, look at District Ten's Honorable Kathleen Brown, who spoke in her race not of the divisions but of the quality and type of educations parents want for their children regardless of race, income, or their background. Parents send their childrens to school to learn to think, to prepare for the future. And Mrs. Brown heard this because she actually listened to the citizens who spoke to her. What a concept. Finally, I want to say a quick thank you to Mrs. Felton for your service and for your always dignified behavior to those even with whom you disagree. To Mrs. Holtz, I will have to say that I will just recognize one day where you were so hypocritical that you voted for students to remain masked while you were without yourself a mask claiming you just needed a break, which is what I think now the students of Virginia Beach are going to get. Laura Hughes, I will mention her. She leaves tonight, and I will say that her calm intellect, her quiet and concise summations will be greatly missed. She always acted with the schools not publicity for herself as her priority. There's an at-large seat open in 2024, and I most sincerely hope she considers running for it. Finally, I will say that in spite of all the differences that I have had here, that this experience of being here in the last two years has been one of the best of my life. I have learned a lot, and I'm very grateful for it. Thank you, and happy holidays.
Our next speaker is David Cutchins, Eli Osborne, and then Mike Allen.
Good evening.
Good evening and Merry Christmas. I'm here tonight to thank you, to thank this board for recognizing that parents have the right to protect their children from sexually explicit materials in their classrooms and for giving them a way to do that with your proposed policy 6-11. This is one small step for this board towards fully recognizing the authority of parents to direct the upbringing of their children. History, volumes of research, and legal precedent all support the fact that parental involvement improves students' overall health and academic performance. In this light, we continue to encourage you, the board, to correct your September 13th resolution in which you acknowledged the importance of parents in education, but then declared yourselves equal partners in deciding how and what our children are taught and exposed to in school. We also urge you to continue to work on a policy equivalent to 6-11 to help parents protect their students from sexually inappropriate materials in the libraries. That has still not been resolved. We're looking forward to supporting this board in 2023 and continuing to restore parental authority and encourage increased parental involvement in our classrooms across the city. Finally, we ask for God's blessings over each of you and over all of our children as we do celebrate the season of the birth of the one who came to redeem us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eli Osborne, then Mike Allen, then Robert Tuitt.
Good evening. My name is Eli Osborne, and as a manager at the Family Foundation of Virginia, I am speaking on behalf of hundreds of concerned parents and citizens in the city of Virginia Beach who look to us for help in having a voice. On behalf of those parents and members of the Speak Up Tidewater team who are here tonight, I want to thank you for consideration of proposed policy 6-11 and urge you toward final adoption of this policy. Adoption of proposed policy 6-11 would bring the school district into alignment with the state parental rights law, SB 656, requiring Virginia Public Schools by January 1st to allow parents prior notice and the opportunity to review sexually explicit material being used in the classroom or for other forms of instruction. These policies ensure that parents can properly guide and instruct their children through oversight of highly sensitive materials, and they do so in this way. The model policies provide helpful definitions for, quote, "sexually explicit content" that is based on existing state law, as well as what constitutes instructional materials. The model policies prioritize parents' involvement in their child's education, including the decision about whether the use of sexually explicit content in instructional materials is appropriate for their child and aligns with their faith and family values. The model policy rightly emphasizes the importance of protecting a child's innocence and the right of a parent to choose, quote, "alternative instructional materials for the student that does not include sexually explicit content." And lastly, the model, excuse me, the model policies require principals to publish and maintain a current list of instructional materials with sexually explicit content for each grade and subject on the school's public website. The Family Foundation thanks you for these important updates to current policy. We do ask that you revisit the September 13th resolution where parents were deemed as, quote, "equal partners in deciding what is best for their child's education." This language remains objectionable to many parents who don't view the government as a co-parent in the education of their child. To correct this language, we ask that you strike the "equal partner" reference and replace it with a direct reference to policy 6-11 to affirm the board respects the primacy of parents. It's important to be reminded that schools are to help the parents, but there is no equal partnership under the law. Virginia state law and court precedents supports this. For example, in 2000, the U.S. Supreme Court reaffirmed the rights of parents in Troxville Graham when it held that, quote, "the liberty interest of parents in the care, custody, and control of their children is perhaps the oldest of the fundamental liberty interests recognized by this court." Parents have the most intimate knowledge of their children and can make the most informed decision for their children's well-being. As a result, parents should have the power to decide if, when, and how their kids are introduced to sexually explicit topics. Proposed policy 6-11 appears to take important steps forward in accomplishing these outcomes, so please adopt this policy tonight. Thank you for the time to speak.
Our next speaker is Mike Allen, then Robert Tuitt, then Jennifer Lynch.
Welcome. To all of the members of the Virginia Beach School Board, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share a few of my thoughts and observations as a result of my attendance at several of the board meetings that have recently taken place. During those meetings, I've watched as several students representing high schools in the Virginia Beach community have spoken about their thoughts and perspectives on the 2022 model policies that have been introduced by the Department of Education under the Yonkin Administration. As I've watched them make their presentations, meeting after meeting, I've been impressed by their delivery, their reasoning, their intelligence, their articulation, and their passion. As a result, I have to compliment them on a job well done. However, with all due respect, I'd like to offer a perspective for the school board to consider that differs with the position taken by these students, and that difference encompasses the subject of parental rights. If I were to simply frame my position in the form of a question, it would be as follows: Is there ever a time when information of a significant nature is allowed to be intentionally withheld by the school system from a parent or legal guardian? My answer is no. I understand that there are parents whose parenting skills leave a lot to be desired, but I also know full well that none of us, when playing the role of either a parent, a student, a teacher, or an administrator, perform our jobs perfectly. I also know something that many of these passionate students do not know at the moment, but one day they may in the future, and that is the love that is created deep within themselves when they bring a child of their own into the world for the first time. Those who have done so, especially those who are mothers, understand that there is a heart connection that is established that can't be adequately described with the vocabulary that most of us possess. And their end result of this connection can be summarized in a statement from many parents such as this: Do not withhold anything from me that pertains to my child. Let me, as the parent or guardian, determine what is best for my child and not the Commonwealth of Virginia. In closing, there may be subtle tweaks that can be made to these model policies, such as those that pertain to the use of nicknames. But I ask you, as you consider what to do going forward with these policies, not to weaken or dilute the rights of parents, to stay informed on the significant issues that pertain to their children. This is a right that can only be described as sacred and one that is unable to be compromised. Thank you again for the opportunity to share my thoughts.
Our next speaker is Robin Tuitt, Jennifer Lynch, and then Don LeBar.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Robin Tuitt, and I am a mother of two children that have been through the Virginia Beach City School System. I'm a grandmother of five, two of which are currently in the Virginia Beach City School System, and I was an employer of 30 years. And at that time, I hired and educated students from your marketing departments in all of your Virginia Beach high schools. I would like to go on the record that I am in support of the current 2022 model policies concerning parents' rights. I will read from that, the purpose here. It says, "The department also fully acknowledges the rights of parents to exercise their fundamental rights granted by the Fourteenth Amendment in the United States Constitution to direct the care, upbringing, and education of their children." And I emphasize "their children." I would also, addressing that, "The information obtained by teachers from students to be held in secret is not consistent with the fundamental rights of these parents. Nothing held in secret can prosper." An example may look like a parent sending a child that has been given the name Nancy and is by birth gender assigned female can go to a teacher and change their name to Nathan using pronouns that were not in the dictionary just a few years ago. At home, that same child is still called Nancy. Processing this in the mind of a child from elementary school, middle school, or high school is frightening. The teacher holding this secret affirms this confusion with that child. The teacher may have just graduated from college or a 30-year teacher and is hired and qualified to teach English, math, science, history, PE, whatever. Where the teacher is, where is the teacher finding the proper information to address the traumatic level of change? When parents come in for a conference and that same teacher reveals the student is having difficulty trying to focus and even comprehending the subject, it would be of no surprise to me, or no wonder at all, that these sensitive issues have not been addressed and are now being witnessed by the progress in the student's achievement. Solution?
Thirty seconds.
Teachers, parents, guidance counselors, and therapy counselors may be needed to show compassion and responsibility to the children. Any issue a child may share with a teacher is important. However, a teacher is not a friend. The teacher is but one person over the 12 years of public schooling. Many teachers will inspire, influence, and teach our young, but parents will be there for the long haul. Let's do this amazing work together, giving a child a chance to discover and understand themselves.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Jennifer Lynch, Don LeBar, and then Barbara Rody. Our next speaker is Jennifer Lynch, Don LeBar, and then Barbara Rody.
Please identify yourself because we're out of order now.
I'm Don LeBar.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. I'm standing before you today with a heavy heart and a deep sense of frustration. As many of you already know, the rights of transgender students are under attack. Recently, we've seen a surge of hateful and discriminatory policies across our nation, but none greater than the model policies here in Virginia. The policies that are being proposed are not based in fact or scientific consensus. They are not in the best interest of students, and they are not, to quote the stated values of this very school board, ensuring that every student is achieving his or her maximum potential in engaging, inspiring, and challenging learning environment. The fact that students cannot go by the name of their choosing without jumping through hoops with administrators is ludicrous. Mountains of studies show that deadnaming students is deeply detrimental to their learning and well-being, yet these policies ignore that clear consensus. The cruel practice of deadnaming must be stopped immediately. Make no mistake, it is a form of harassment and bullying, and we cannot allow it to fester in our schools. It is the responsibility of educators, parents, and community leaders to create a safe and inclusive environment for all our students, and that includes ensuring that they are referred to by their chosen names and pronouns. I implore each and every one of you to take a stand against deadnaming and to support the rights of our transgender students. We must do better for them, for all the young people who are in our care. We must stand together and reject these hateful laws. We must speak against bigotry and discrimination in all its forms. We must work together to create a world where all individuals, regardless of their gender identity, are treated with respect and dignity. We must not allow fear and ignorance to triumph over justice and equality. We must not allow hate to win. We must work together to create a world where all individuals, regardless of gender identity, are treated with respect and dignity. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Barbara Rody, Kathleen Slindy, then Krista Sheets.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Rody, and I am a mother of two children in the Virginia Beach City Public School System. I'm here tonight to affirm my support for the current 2022 model policies on the privacy, dignity, and respect for all students and parents. The Code of Virginia reaffirms the rights of parents to determine how their children will be raised and educated. Empowering parents is not only a fundamental right, but it is essential to improving outcomes for all children in Virginia. The key word here tonight is "children." It is a scientific fact that the prefrontal cortex of the human brain is not finished developing and maturing until the mid to late twenties. It is one of the last brain regions to fully mature and is responsible for cognitive control, reasoning, problem-solving, comprehension, and impulse control, among other things. With that knowledge alone, it is crystal clear to me, and should be for anyone in this room, the importance of parental guidance. Allowing a teacher to withhold vital information from parents regarding any issues or health and well-being for their child is a detriment to the child's growth and to the strength of the family unit. Where does this end? We all know the phrase- We all know the phrase, "Give him an inch, he will take a mile." Giving this concession to a student and teacher and disregarding the parent-child relationship would be a very slippery and dangerous slope. We need to be focused together, parents, teachers, students, counselors, coaches, to ensure a proper education and a successful transition into adulthood. I can only hope we are all here for the same reasons, our most important responsibility as an adult, to protect our children and give them the ability to reach their full potential. If you are here for that reason, for the best interests of all children, then you will vote in favor of the 2022 Model Policies for Virginia's public schools. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Slindy, then Krista Sheets.
Welcome. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, School Board, and Dr. Spence. I am Kathleen Slindy, and I am the proud president of the VBEA. It's that time of year when we start thinking of the new year and what it will bring. And also this afternoon, we witnessed the swearing-in of the new school board members. It is my hope that this new school board, VBCPS and VBEA, will work together for what is best for our students and employees so we can maintain our world-class school system. We are in a position where the education system is in a crisis of educator retention and recruiting. How many VBCPS educators have left since the start of the school year? How many have decided not to return in January after the break? Let's put aside the conflicting viewpoints and personal agendas and focus on what is best for our students and employees. I compared what VEA and VBCPS have included in our legislative agendas, and there is a great deal of agreement. We agree that teacher salary increases will aid in recruitment and retention, and we can support legislation to address this. We agree that the support cap put in place by the General Assembly during the 2009 recession must be removed. Removing it is a step toward our state providing school divisions with adequate funding for the necessary support personnel, like our school psychologists and social workers, counselors, and instructional support staff, attendance, security, transportation, technology, facility operations, and maintenance staff. We both believe that school divisions need more federal and state funding to assist with the high cost of unfunded mandates, special education services, and school construction and modernizations. And there are more agenda items that we both support. Let's work together in Virginia Beach to make sure the General Assembly gives us the resources we need to keep our world-class school system. Imagine the VBCPS school board and the VBEA members advocating and lobbying together on January 16th at the VBEA Lobby Day. Imagine the impact it would have on our legislators, knowing that we had joined forces to work together. The Roanoke Times published an editorial on December 11th titled, "Expect More Attacks on Public Education in 2023," referencing the fights predicted in Richmond regarding public education. I'll email you that editorial later tonight. Aren't we all tired of these attacks? Let's come together and advocate for the resources we need to continue our world-class public school system here at the beach. VBCPS loves to be a leader in the Commonwealth, and imagine the impact it would have on our employees and students to know that all those with lobbying power have joined forces to advocate and lobby for what is best for public education. The morale boost to our educators will be great when they know we are all working together instead of against each other. So I will be following up with Dr. Robertson and Mr. Sutton to coordinate plans for us to take on the General Assembly together on January 16th's Lobby Day in Richmond. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Krista Sheets.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to all of you tonight. Before I get started with what I prepared before I came, I just wanted to commend the students who came here and spoke tonight. You all did such an excellent job and are a real testament to the public education that you've received here in Virginia Beach. My name is Krista Sheets, and I'm the mother of six children, currently attending four different schools in the Virginia Beach School System. I have three children at Trentwood Elementary in kindergarten, third and fifth grade, a third grader at Old Donation School, a sixth grader at Great Neck Middle, and an eighth grader at Lynn Haven Middle School. My husband's a graduate of Kempsville. He's in the military, and our family has lived here now for just over six years. About three years ago, we made the decision to spend the last part of his career here and to make Virginia Beach our forever home. That decision was made in no small part based on our experience with the school system. This is the first school board meeting I've ever come to, and honestly, I feel at this point I didn't have a choice anymore. I've observed board members who support the Students First VB agenda over the last couple of years spend more time stirring the pot than looking out for the best interests of our kids and the teachers who have committed themselves to educating them. I've watched a school board members use social media to plant seeds of fear and division and distract us from the real issues facing our schools. Their mission seems to be to solve problems that just don't exist. As I mentioned, I have six kids in the school system. They have not been the victims of any radical indoctrination. None have been taught critical race theory, the 1619 Project, that they're privileged based on their skin color, or that America is a racist country, just some of the things I see on the Students First VB website. They've not been denied opportunities due to a socialist equity agenda. In fact, my children have benefited from programs like the Pre-K and the Middle School Avid elective. They've been educated by teachers who leave their politics at home while encouraging age-appropriate conversations about our nation's history. And finally, I've never felt like my control or role as a parent has been taken away from me. I have always felt like a member of a team when it comes to educating my children and have never faced a situation where I've reached out to a teacher or administrator and been ignored or made to feel
Thirty seconds.
my status as a parent does not matter. We don't need legislation giving parents a voice in their children's education. We have one, and it's up to us to use it. No one has closed the door on parents or silenced us. We need leaders who are focused and committed to investing in our schools and in turn investing in our teachers and kids. So when you have the responsibility to choose a new chair, I urge you to oppose the nomination of any board member who supports the Students First Agenda. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that was our last in-person speaker, and the online speaker is not online at the moment, so we are concluded with our speakers for tonight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and to all who came to speak tonight. That brings us now to the information portion of our meeting, and we will begin welcoming Dr. Allison Bach, Program Evaluation Specialist with a Report on Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the school board, and Dr. Spence. I'm Dr. Allison Bach, a Program Evaluation Specialist with the Office of Research and Evaluation. This evening, I'll provide an overview of the key findings and recommendations from the Year Two Tier One Evaluation for the Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, or PBIS Initiative. The evaluation report you received in your agenda materials provides additional details. PBIS, as a brief background, PBIS is an implementation framework for selecting and using interventions within a tiered system of support. Tier One involves universal practices for all students across school-wide and classroom settings. Tier Two and Three are focused on students needing additional support through small-group interventions or individual support. Although PBIS practices were used by some schools previously, the current Virginia Beach PBIS model began in 1718 and involves embedded school-level coaching from PBIS coaches. All schools had received training and were implementing Tier One practices in 2122 with the continued impact of the pandemic. An important note is that the majority of high schools began implementing PBIS in the last cohort during 1920. The Year Two Evaluation focused on Tier One implementation of PBIS practices and the extent to which implementation goals were being met, the progress toward meeting outcome goals, and the additional cost of PBIS to the division. Data collection included multiple measures. Data from the District Capacity Assessment, or DCA, assessed conditions in the school division for building capacity to effectively implement PBIS. The Tiered Fidelity Inventory, or TFI, was used to assess the extent to which schools are implementing PBIS with fidelity and is completed by the school's PBIS team along with their division-wide coach each spring. Surveys were conducted for teachers, administrators, and other instructional staff, as well as students and parents. Overall response rates and number of respondents are provided on this slide. Student data were also obtained from the data warehouse, including demographics, attendance, academic achievement, and discipline referrals and suspensions. This slide presents information about PBIS fidelity data. The division's 2122 DCA score was 98%, suggesting that nearly all conditions are in place within the division for building capacity to effectively implement PBIS. This score was the same as in 2021. For the purpose of the evaluation, schools were grouped into one of three categories based on their 2122 overall Tier One TFI fidelity score. The categories were determined following a review of PBIS literature during the evaluation planning phase. Overall, 89% of schools were in the high-fidelity group with an overall TFI percentage from 80 to 100, and 11% of schools were in the adequate-fidelity group with an overall TFI percentage from 70 to 79. No schools were in the partial-fidelity group last year with an overall TFI percentage of 69 or below. All schools had at least a score of 70% on the TFI, which is the recommended level of implementation based on research literature. On the staff survey, two items gauged familiarity and understanding of PBIS. Results showed that at least 90% of staff who responded in each staff group at all school levels indicated they were either very familiar or somewhat familiar with their school's PBIS implementation. In addition, at least 90% of administrators at all levels who responded to the survey agreed their staff had a shared understanding of the PBIS framework. The chart on this slide provides an overall picture of implementation fidelity in 2122 based on schools' TFI scores on each of the subscales and overall rating. As shown on the slide, elementary schools had higher average TFI scores for the teams in implementation subscales as well as overall fidelity. In addition, there was little variation among school levels on the evaluation subscale. Overall, 67% of schools demonstrated an increase in their overall TFI fidelity score from 2021 to 2122. At the elementary school and high school levels, there were improvements in most TFI items with notable increases at the high school level. When examining scores on individual TFI items in 2122, the only item with a decrease in the average score in comparison to 2021 at the division level was for discipline data. This item was a part of the evaluation subscale and assessed whether the team had access to graph reports summarizing discipline data. In addition, the feedback and acknowledgement and classroom procedures items had the lowest average scores at the secondary levels. These items were part of the implementation subscale. The feedback and acknowledgement item assessed the extent to which there are procedures for behavior feedback linked with school-wide expectations and used across settings. The classroom procedures item assessed the extent to which Tier One features are implemented within classrooms and are consistent with school-wide systems. There were four implementation goals assessed as part of the Tier One Evaluation. They focused on schools having policies and procedures to implement PBIS, professional learning opportunities, reviewing data to inform decision-making related to PBIS practices, and schools involving stakeholders. Data related to each goal area by school level will be shown on the following slides. In addition, correlation analyses will be presented, which assess the validity of the two measures. Significant relationships between scores on individual TFI items and related survey data will be noted on the bottom of the slides. The first implementation goal was that schools have clearly defined behavioral expectations for students and staff and established procedures for staff to implement PBIS consistently within their schools and classrooms. Teacher agreement percentages for survey items related to this goal are shown on the slide by school level. At least 71% of teachers at all levels agree that their school had positive expectations for student behavior. Students know what behavior is expected. Their school determined behaviors that interfered with academic success, and their school outlined procedures for responding to behavior. Lower percentages of teachers at the secondary levels agree that the expectations are implemented across classrooms and that behavioral expectations are explicitly taught. At least 83% of students at all levels agreed with similar items related to policies and procedures. As shown by the stars on the slide, there was a relationship between a school's TFI scores and staff and student survey results on all items shown. Schools with higher TFI scores on the related items also had higher staff and student agreement percentages, suggesting validity and reliability of the TFI and stakeholder perception data for measuring the level of PBIS implementation fidelity. These relationships will be noted on each implementation goal slide where applicable. The second implementation goal is that professional learning opportunities provide staff with effective support to successfully implement PBIS. As shown in the table, at least 67% of teachers at all levels agreed they received professional learning on various PBIS-related topics. In addition, as shown in the chart, at least 79% of teachers at each level agree the professional learning provided them with the knowledge of classroom practices to manage behavior, that they felt confident applying instructional practices to address student behavior, and they could manage and respond to student behavior concerns when needed. The third implementation goal is that data are reviewed and used regularly to inform decision-making related to PBIS practices. During 2122, a new data analytics platform, Unified Insights, was purchased. Office of Student Support Services staff have started preparing for school staff to use the platform to guide decision-making for PBIS. Staff who indicated they were a member of their school's PBIS Tier One team on the survey were asked about their team's data review and use. As shown by the figure, at least 78% of team members at each level agree that their team had access to student problem behavior through a discipline data system, that their team reviewed school-wide data at least monthly to inform decision-making, and that their team reviewed and used Tier One fidelity data yearly to inform decision-making. In addition, teachers were asked about teachers reviewing and using data. From 54% to 65% of secondary teachers agree that teachers reviewed school-wide data at least four times per year to inform decision-making about school-wide practices, while 77% of elementary teachers agreed. The fourth implementation goal for Tier One is that schools involve students, families, and staff during the school-wide PBIS Tier One implementation. Based on survey items about awareness of PBIS practices, at least 76% of students and parents at each level agree that their school had a system to positively recognize student behavior with highest agreement at elementary schools. At all levels, at least 96% of parents agree that they were aware of student behavior expectations at their child's school. Additionally, at least 80% of teachers, nearly all administrators, and at least 86% of other instructional staff agreed they supported their school's PBIS implementation. There were four outcome goals focused on student engagement, positive perceptions of school safety and discipline procedures, student social and emotional skills, and positive perceptions of school climate. Data for each of these goal areas will be shown by school level due to all schools reaching the recommended level of implementation during 2122. In addition, correlation analyses were run to examine the relationship between implementation fidelity and the outcome measures. Significant relationships between scores on the TFI and survey data will be noted on the bottom of the slides. The first outcome goal is that when PBIS is implemented with fidelity, students will be engaged at school. Related student survey data showed that at least 85% of students agree that they were engaged in their learning by participating and working hard in school, and that they were engaged in classroom lessons. Teacher agreement on similar items was higher at the elementary school level than secondary levels. Teachers and administrators were also surveyed about the extent to which PBIS practices improved student attendance and student engagement. Response options included "to a large extent," "to a moderate extent," "to a small extent," or "not at all." The percentages of staff who indicated PBIS practices improved these areas to a large or moderate extent are shown on the slide. Overall, higher percentages of elementary school staff indicated that PBIS practices improved these areas to a larger moderate extent than secondary staff. As a note, when including the percentages of staff who indicated PBIS practices improved these areas to a small extent, the percentages increased to at least 68% for items on the The second outcome goal is that students and teachers will have positive perceptions of school safety and discipline procedures when PBIS is implemented with fidelity. Related teacher survey data showed that at least 72% of teachers agree that the school was a safe and orderly place to learn and that there are high expectations for student behavior. Somewhat lower percentages of teachers at all levels agreed that with items related to students knowing the consequences for misbehaving and the rules for student behavior being effective. and the rules for student behavior being effective. At least eighty-four percent of students agreed with similar items. Regarding the extent to which PBIS practices improved school safety and the consistency of discipline procedures, higher percentages of elementary school staff indicated that PBIS practices improved these areas to a large or moderate extent than secondary staff. However, a majority of teachers and administrators at each level indicated that PBIS practices improved school safety to a larger moderate extent. When including the percentages of staff who indicated PBIS practices improved these areas to a small extent, the percentages increased to at least seventy-three percent for items on this slide. The third outcome goal is that students will learn to regulate their emotions and demonstrate social emotional competence in the areas noted on the slide. At all levels, at least seventy-seven percent of responses were agreement responses for all SEL competencies. Regarding the extent to which PBIS practices improved student emotion regulation and social emotional competence, higher percentages of elementary school staff indicated that PBIS practices improved these areas to a large or moderate extent than secondary staff. When including the percentages of staff who indicated PBIS practices improved these areas to a small extent, the percentages increased to at least seventy-six percent for items on this slide. The fourth outcome goal is that students and teachers will have positive perceptions of school climate. Teacher survey data related to school climate showed that at least seventy-five percent of teachers at all levels agreed students treat them with respect, feel supported by school administrators, and teachers and other students support one another to meet students' needs. In addition, at least eighty-seven percent of students agree that they had positive relationships with other students. Regarding the extent to which PBIS practices improved school climate and student and teacher relationships, higher percentages of elementary school staff indicated that PBIS practices improved these areas to a larger moderate extent than secondary staff. When including the percentages of staff who indicated PBIS practices improved these areas to a small extent, the percentages increased to at least seventy-five percent for items on this slide. In addition to the PBIS outcome goals, the evaluation plan also included an examination of the relationship between PBIS implementation and academic achievement and behavior. Teachers and administrators were surveyed about the extent to which PBIS practices improved academic achievement and student behavior and reduced discipline referrals. Overall, higher percentages of elementary school staff indicated that PBIS practices improved these areas and reduced discipline referrals to a larger moderate extent than secondary staff. When including the percentages of staff who indicated PBIS practices improved these areas to a small extent, the percentages increased to at least seventy-six percent for items on this slide. During the 21, 22 school year, schools were provided the opportunity to identify a PBIS-related goal or set of goals that were a focus for their school. Additional analyses examined staff perceptions and student data for schools that identified the area as their school goal in comparison to the division. This allowed for a more targeted approach to assess the relationship between PBIS and school goal areas. In comparison to data from all schools, schools with a goal in a particular area had more positive staff perceptions that PBIS was effective in improving this area and more positive student data on a majority of related measures, although this varied by school level and area as summarized in the table on the slide. Elementary schools with goals in the areas of student engagement, school safety and climate, and academics had more positive outcomes in these areas than all elementary schools. Middle schools with goals in the areas of school safety and climate, student social emotional competence, academics, and discipline disproportionality had more positive outcomes in these areas. High schools with goals in the areas of social emotional competence and discipline had more positive outcomes in these areas. In summary, overall, implementation and outcome staff perceptions were consistently most positive at the elementary school level, and the highest TFI scores overall and for most items were found at the elementary school level. In addition, there were many significant relationships between staff and student survey items and school TFI scores. Therefore, schools with higher scores on the TFI also had higher agreement percentages on many items and higher percentages of staff indicating PBIS was effective in various areas. Lastly, overall, in comparison to data from all schools, schools with a goal in some areas had more positive staff perceptions that PBIS was effective in improving this area, although this varied by school level and area. The areas with more positive perceptions by school level are noted on the slide. The total additional cost to the division for PBIS during 21, 22 was approximately $464,000. Staffing, including a PBIS specialist and four PBIS coaches accounted for the initiative's cost to the division. Based on the results of the evaluation, it is recommended that PBIS continue with modifications noted in the following recommendations. The second recommendation is to investigate and implement strategies suggested in research literature for establishing procedures for behavior feedback and consistency of PBIS practices and procedures across classrooms at the secondary levels. The third recommendation is to continue to support school staff and their procedures related to reviewing school-wide data to inform decision-making through the use of Unified Insights. At this time, Mr. Robert Jamison, Executive Director of Student Support Services, will share the administration's response.
Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the School Board, and Dr. Spence. The administration concurs with the recommendations from the program evaluation. As noted in recommendation number two, fidelity of PBIS practices continues to grow this year through focused professional learning for our school staff. These professional learning opportunities have been tailored to the needs of individual schools and led by our PBIS Division Coaching Team. To ensure consistency across the division, we have provided professional learning for bus drivers, nuts and bolts training for all PBIS administrative teams to address implementation and fidelity, and professional learning on classroom practices for all of our new staff through the new staff orientation. Additionally, PBIS coaches partnered with the behavior intervention specialists and avid coordinators to increase alignment of practices across initiatives. Many of our secondary schools have continued to move forward with the work of PBIS through student voice groups and professional learning for their staff on behavior feedback and student acknowledgement. Overall, as schools spend more time implementing the PBIS framework, they move from focusing on structure and fidelity to providing resources and training for our staff. With this transition, we see an increase in the reported impact by school division staff and stakeholders, as noted in the data. At the elementary level, we have seen great success with establishing school-wide expectations and acknowledgement systems that staff, students, and parents understand, value, and support. At the middle school level, we have been successful by responding to the feedback from staff and students. An example of one of our middle schools, Lynn Haven Middle School, they recently used student feedback to revise their acknowledgement system, thereby allowing a greater percentage of their students to receive positive acknowledgement for their behavior. And at the high school level, implementation is focused on creating and sustaining student voice groups who provide potential solutions with action steps for school-based concerns. An example of this on the high school level is the Stallion Speaks Student Voice Group at Green Run. They were able to address safety in the hallways by working with school staff to implement new procedures and pathways for student movement during class transitions. Across the School Division One Academic Intervention functioning well at select elementary schools and all secondary schools is our Avid program. Based on student performance and achievement data, schools identify and recommend students for this Avid program and is part of our integrated system of support through the PBIS framework. Again, with student outcomes in mind, as school-based PBIS teams move from implementation and fidelity to outcome data and staff supports, we begin to see higher rates of impact across all levels. We will continue with expanding and strengthening these practices to improve the impact of PBIS across all levels. Furthermore, we will explore more opportunities directly communicate with families through PTSAs and the community at large. In regard to reviewing school-wide and division-wide data, our PBIS Division Coaching Team has worked to increase the capacity of all schools in the data decision-making process. Specifically, we recently provided training to all principals in the Unified Insights data platform, and we provided them a resource to guide their work when reviewing their data. All division instructional staff now have access, excuse me, to data within Unified Insights, and a plan is underway to ensure all staff receive training and the support to maximize the benefits of this platform. This concludes our comments for the evening. Dr. Bach, Ms. Sammy Betham, our PBIS specialists, and I am ready to answer any questions that you may have at this time. Thank you.
Mrs. Franklin.
Thank you, Dr. Jamison. When I was at the PPMC meeting, you had kindly addressed my question about the gap between the teacher feedback as well as the admin, and I think that your response was a good response, and I would like for you to please also provide that to the whole group here.
Yes, ma'am. So, as we shared during PPMC, the PBIS framework is just that. It's the framework through which we're able to make decisions as a school, and our administrative teams are in a position to review data to then make decisions as a school with our school staff to implement different interventions to support our students. And at the PPMC, one of the things that we noted are that as schools have been implementing this over time, and they have moved from focusing on the structure of the framework, the fidelity to that framework, we then start to make that transition with support of our admin teams and our PBIS coaches to implementing resources that directly impact our day-to-day teachers' work. And as teachers start to make that explicit connection, or administrators start to make that explicit connection and communicate how the PBIS framework is leading us to that in that direction of, again, need with resource, we start to see a higher rate of agreement, and the level of impact is higher across our schools with more time of implementation. Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Manning.
Yes, I have two questions. On the Slide sixteen, the relationship between PBIS implementation and academics and discipline. I'm wondering, I think I've seen this survey before, believe, but I could be wrong. Do we have previous years to compare this data to on these same questions?
This was the first year we asked these questions.
Okay, I've seen these questions before, but I guess it was in a different context. So, I mean, these numbers, in my opinion, are quite low for whether or not PBIS is improving academic achievement or improving student behavior or reducing discipline referrals. And there seems to be a huge disconnect between the teacher's response and the administration's response in all of these areas. What is the reason for that disconnect? Have you posed that question to teachers or administrators?
So, the numbers that we've provided on the slide, we set somewhat of a high bar. So, we included the percentages of teachers and administrators who indicated that PBIS impacted these areas to a larger moderate extent. So, when we also include "to a small extent", which still impacting, PBIS impacting these areas, they increased to, for most of the items, at least seventy-five percent. So, you are correct, we do see a disconnect, a difference between the administrator percentages and the teacher percentages. Mr. Jamison spoke to that a little bit. So, in general, just from the ORI perspective, we do see administrators have higher agreement percentages than teachers in general. Also, administrators have somewhat of a different perspective, a school-level perspective, instead of teachers. So, that would be a possibility.
Yeah, I mean, I hear that a lot. I hear teachers saying one thing and administrators saying another. So, and specifically with disciplines. So, if we can kind of nail down the reason for that. I mean, I know, Mr. Jamison, Ms. Franklin had a similar question, but it wasn't quite, I didn't quite get the answer that I was looking for.
Well, if I can give an example. As we said, PBIS framework to which we make decisions, as the structures are in place, there are times that the PBIS teams in our buildings are not asked to address some of those specific concerns. And as more time is put towards implementation, those teams are then asked to make direct impact on student behavior or even our discipline data or even attendance. So, I do not disagree that, as you will look across our school division, a good majority of our schools are now moving into a, you know, the next tier of support in terms of we're now moving from a PBIS fidelity standpoint to let's make some direct impacts on our outcome data. A direct example I'd like to provide, though, is just from this past, really, two months. We had PBIS team at Betty F. Williams Elementary School that was looking at student data, and they're looking at performance data as well as behavior data. And they determined that their teachers needed additional training or professional learning on classroom practices, the escalation strategies. That was discussed by the PBIS team. That then led to a further discussion with the administration, which then led to our behavior intervention specialists providing direct professional learning to those teachers. And so, as we have more time for implementation, we have goals that can be put in place by those PBIS teams that can lead to direct resources being provided to our teachers. So, I agree with you. We're seeing that discrepancy now. We do expect to see that decrease over time as we have more of our schools' PBIS teams move from, again, structure to resources, excuse me, interventions.
Okay, well, I appreciate the response, but I've been asking these questions for many, many, many years. And I'm not seeing that PBIS is being effective, in my personal opinion. Again, I've been asking these questions since, almost since I got on the board. And every year, I'm just told, we need more time, we're implementing more, we're doing more, and I just don't see the results. The, it was mentioned that there's some data analytics that's being put into place. Is this work that teachers are going to have to do or that teachers, is it extra work that teachers are having to record information or keep track of any information for the teachers?
No, ma'am. If anything, it's the opposite. It provides the data for teachers in a very streamlined fashion.
Okay, so it's not any extra things that they have to do? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Melnick.
So, when we first implemented PBIS back in 2017, I think one of the, in fairness to Mrs. Manning, one of the main components that you mentioned to us was the word "time" and that this was going to take time. And you're, I don't think there's a single disciplinary anything that's going to happen overnight. But as someone who's in schools all the time, and I will mention my beloved Green Run Elementary School, but you mentioned Green Run High School, and I recently stopped by Green Run to buy a sweatshirt for the football game, and I happened to be there during one lunch. And it was actually amazing. I've seen plenty of one lunches, but walking through those hallways, some of the things that I saw that were PBIS-related, and then it was almost like learning a new language and understanding somebody for the first time, like, oh. and understanding somebody for the first time, like, oh. And I heard some of that shared language that I, that you hear on the elementary level has kind of made its way into a high school, and that's only going to grow as children age up. So, you know, when, when my little guys at Green Run Elementary make it to Green Run High School, that's second nature to them. And honestly, for a lot of them, they're almost there now, right? So, and so, I know it's going to take time. We're seeing, we're seeing change, and there is no magic pill, right? Nothing's going to happen overnight. And so, I've always been a fan of PBIS. I see it working, and I look forward to watching this, watching this grow.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Franklin.
I'm going to go ahead first with mine. So, my questions are twofold, so I'll take them in whatever order you choose. And one of, one of them may be more a docile answer. So, with respect to the gap between elementary and high school, do we have data to compare with other divisions who implement this program to know how typical it is or not? And secondly, I mean, my instinct tells me, but is there something to support this? That is, is high schools what comes to, I mean, obviously, they're at least five times the size of the average elementary school. Then there's the difference in age of the students, and there's just that much more faculty to work with. I mean, so that, I guess, so that, to summarize my two questions, again, do we, do we know if other systems, other divisions, excuse me, see the same gap between the two levels? And I'm leaving middle school out, they're kind of in the, and secondly, what, you know, what do you, what is your explanation or speculation or conclusion on the gap in the data between elementary and high school?
No, it's fine. To answer the latter of your two questions, my speculation is, and not to repeat the same word, but you are correct in terms of the amount of time that it does take to impact a larger group of staff. I also think, and this goes to Ms. Manning's point, it's explicit communication between the efforts being made at schools with their school staff and their school teams, as well as with their school communities, and how some of the changes that we are making as part of our PBIS framework or through our PBIS teams to what we're seeing in the day in, day out, I'd say, operations of our buildings. Just to give another example, you know, looking at Green Run Collegiate with their student acknowledgement ceremony or assembly, like, that came from the work of a PBIS team. However, there are other decisions that are made in our school teams that may not effectively be communicated, and that's something we're working on as we look at this data to make sure that the connection between efforts of our teams and our admin teams and our PBIS coaches who are providing professional learning to the outcomes that we see in our classrooms day in and day out are more explicit. And to your point, on a larger scale, when you have a larger group of faculty, that individual impact that might be made on one teacher may not be as profound as we would want it to be, and as a result, the data will show that we need to do more to make those connections with larger groups. As I'm sure all of you have seen, when you walk into an elementary classroom or an elementary school, much of what we have discussed about PBIS is very clear. Part of the reason why that is very clear is that they might be in year five or year six of implementation, and some of it will just take more time, some of it will just take additional professional learning on our part with the school teams. So, it's a collective issue of size, time, and the different steps that we're taking in our buildings to make an impact. In terms of comparison from one school system to another, I do not have access to that data. I'm interested to do similar research and come back to the board with that unless Dr. Bach would like to share some additional details related to it.
Just to mirror what Mr. Jamison said, I, that was not a specific focus of the evaluation to examine others, but the high schools in particular, the majority of them were in the final cohort for implementing PBIS, so they're.
I meant to ask about that, too, the timeline.
Yes.
But I guess the reason I think of other divisions is maybe, it is such a different model, and I understand that elementary students, they could have team teachers, and they do have specialty teachers, but the high school kids every day have, well, now we're on a four-by-four, but every 48-hour period, they're, they have, what, eight different teachers? So, so that's still, I mean, so maybe now they're, they're just other possible approaches to recognize these additional, and I don't know if challenge is the word, but just the different realities of a high school setting versus a single classroom elementary setting.
That was the intention of our second recommendation, to examine the research literature focused on the two areas where secondary schools were lowest, the acknowledgement and feedback and the classroom procedures. So, we have seen in the, in the research that high schools have some challenges in those areas. And so, our recommendation was to kind of delve into the, into the research literature and see what, what it suggests to address those areas.
Thank you.
Here's your list. We have Mrs. Franklin, and then Mrs. Felton.
Dr. Jamison, I do, I absolutely appreciate all of this, and I do look forward to a time where we see less of a gap between those opinions. I will say that I have, and when I go into the elementary schools, I really love the PBIS implementation that I see all around the school. I would agree that at the secondary levels, it seems like there's a less vibrant approach to it, and I don't know if that is because we just implemented that in 2017 and it hasn't maybe trickled up, upwards, so to speak. And so, I guess my question is, do you think that the pandemic also diminished some of the, the progress that we were making simply because the kids were not in school? And so, is that skewing some of these numbers because we're, we're seeing, you know, that two-year, almost two-year gap where we were not really that focused on, on that during that time?
I do want to be clear and say that in my new role, I want to take ownership of data that we have so that we can make impacts to improve moving forward. So, I don't want to focus on something that occurred in the past as a sole reason. That said, I do believe that there were significant impacts that we were all navigating as it comes to students being re-acclimated to school, having to navigate different procedures by our staff as well as for our students, and ensuring that there's consistency now that the school environment, so to speak, changed. So, I do believe that was part of the impact. I do believe that the ability to implement certain interventions, whether in a hybrid setting, a fully virtual setting, or a face-to-face setting, was something that our PBIS teams, administrative teams, school leaders, all had to navigate, teachers and counselors included. So, there is an impact in that. But as we move forward, again, I want to focus on, we have an opportunity here to make improvements. I think we have a great team in place to do so, and we'll continue to see what impacts we can, I'd say, tweak, or what interventions we could tweak or adjust to make that bigger impact at the secondary level with feedback from our stakeholders.
So, and I'm sorry, I just have one other question. So, would you say that studies show that there is a layering effect? Because obviously, the impact is greater at the elementary school level. So, as they continue to layer every single year, do you study show that with PBIS, we will eventually see that it is creating more of an impact at the secondary level?
We will, and I think that we already do. I think the great work of our Department of School Leadership to have our different level teams, or, you know, excuse me, essentially the feeder pattern meetings that are occurring amongst school leaders so that I can discuss in my building as an elementary school principal, what they would be walking into with a middle school principal, and we start to discuss those expectations while in fifth grade before going into sixth grade, while in eighth grade before going into ninth grade. The different information eyes that you see, rising ninth-grade orientation, beginning of the school year orientation in August, that's the direct result of that. So, as that becomes a more consistent practice, not interrupted by a pandemic, and something that can be done year in, year out, emphasized, communicated effectively with our stakeholders, external and internal, I think we will definitely see that, and the data does suggest it.
All right, Mrs. Wiens, and then Ms. Owens.
Okay, thank you. So, did you evaluate this, like, this is a two-year evaluation, the last two years. So, did that include all schools that are implementing this, no matter if they've been doing it for six years or one year? Correct? Okay. Did you evaluate it just, like, when did we start this, 2017, 16? Okay, 2017. Okay, so, did you, or have y'all evaluated it with all the schools that have been doing it for six years almost versus one year? Because I would assume from the conversation and from what I'm hearing, if you took the schools that have been practicing or implementing it for six years, they would not have the gap numbers that we're seeing, 40% teachers and 99% administrators. Did you do it that way, or is that, to me, because to me, that would be very helpful in deciding or giving comfort to those who are questioning these numbers if you've got, you know, 18 schools, and I don't remember when or how many we implemented, the 18 schools that started in 2017, look at their, you know, scores and numbers versus the school that started it last year.
Yes, so, within this year, we did not analyze the data that way, but we can definitely do that for you and provide it to you.
I mean, if it, yeah, if it's not too much trouble, because I think that would be very helpful to see that.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can get you the data that way, yeah.
Okay.
The full board would appreciate that.
Yeah, oh, yeah, definitely the full board. Okay, thank you very much.
Just to add, we do have some data that we can share with the board related to TFI scores and that, correlation by cohort.
All right, Ms. Owens, you're on.
Thank you. And thank you for the thorough presentation. You mentioned, or touched on, one of the things that I was thinking as this was being presented, and that is that comparing the statistics we have from whatever studies we've looked at that persuaded us to take on this project are not going to be apples-to-apples comparisons. They didn't implement it and have a pandemic in between. Additionally, when you put that in combination with the turnover that we have in our staff, we talk about these vacancies, these shortages, it is harder to have that consistency when we, we know we have students who have had a permanent sub all year with different people who, who maybe rotated through that, or classes kind of being split and moved. And so, I appreciate that we are taking it as here, here's where we are and moving forward with how we can improve and not necessarily getting too caught up in the previous years. Obviously, we want that recorded and we want that reference, but I think it's important that we are looking at these statistics with a full view of what our schools are dealing with right now. Even the numbers that we were presented earlier today, and I think it had to do with the compensation study, but our teacher-to-student ratios are higher than other districts. So, if we're looking at how it's worked in other districts, we really have to look at it with a Virginia Beach lens and what we have going on. So, I appreciate the, the information. I think obviously, we will be watching it closely and watching that progression, but I just wanted to kind of share those reflections with the group. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Felton, did I skip you? You're on.
It's okay. Thank you, Chair Rye, I do appreciate this moment. I'd like to say thank you, Dr. Jamison, and your team for pulling together this detailed information. And it was a question that I asked during the PPM meeting that Dr. Robertson really explored and said it in layman's turn about PBIS and the framework of where we're moving with the PBIS as a framework for behavior. And if he get a chance in his life, and tell us that again, but I would like to say this, that after visiting Cook Elementary, Point of View Elementary, Harlem Elementary, Betty F. Williams Elementary, and talking with the principals where PBIS has been implemented, and, and what they're seeing is in engaging with this PBIS, is showing them the things that they need to assist their students, understanding that when we went out with the COVID, the students that are coming back now were pre-K and kindergarten, now they're first and second graders, and having to get them back into that trend of being in an educational environment of who they are and expanding their brain. So, with that said, the principals saying, what they see now is what they need in the school, our psychologists, social workers, and that engagement with our community whom they are working closely with, our FACE department. And I was really excited about that, that all of them that I visit said we are working with them, and they're there in there because there are needs that go beyond academics that our children need as well.
Correct.
And especially our ESL student, that population is really growing as well. So, so what I see that PBIS, PBIS is doing for our division, it is showing the principals the needs that they need to implement a well-being education or a construct that will carry our kids from one point to another. But I just wanted to say thank you for what you're doing, and I'm willing soon to be a community advocate again. I'm willing to see that taking place, and that FACE will be a big component of this as well, because not only that, it's getting, we still have a, for some parents, it's still a academic, with COVID coming behind the flu and the other things with the children that they're having now, we have a large problem with the kids going back into the emergency room, going back to the doctors, what's happening now. So, they are holding, some are holding their kids out of the, they're trying to get that consistency there with them. But I just want to say that I like where PBIS is going and the framework that they're giving them to really feed out in the feeder schools, especially Diamond Spring, Betty F. Williams, Newtown, those three feeder schools, and what they need to continue this great work of education. Thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thank you. With Ms. Betham right behind me, you, and something you just shared, it reminded me of how the framework does make a difference. As schools through PBIS look at their data, and I think several of you made this comment, you're, you're able to see more explicitly the needs of your students, some of your family members, and you're then able to respond more effectively as central office staff looking to support schools, especially within the Office of Student Support Services. That review of the data and that advocacy from the schools, and even advocacy from our PBIS coaches, has led to changes where, for example, the behavior intervention specialist, excuse me, behavior intervention specialist is solely assigned now within the, you know, that tri-campus area, and we're looking to add an additional one, which we do have. So, there's two that are supporting schools. So, when we see a need, through this framework, we're able to clearly see it, data backing that, so that we make more informed decisions of those data decisions as our PBIS coaches have been leading training on, it really has made a difference. That goes to the mental health supports that we're looking to put in place, that goes to the things that our social workers are doing. As our PBIS teams meet and make these decisions, sometimes, again, we can do a better job of effectively communicating the impact across an entire school community. But thank you for bringing that up. We are definitely dedicated to doing so, and we'll continue to do such there.
And that is important because as Ms. Owens has said, that each school has its own dynamics and its own perimeter of the students that we have within those particular districts and zone, and how we address the needs of that particular elementary school, of that particular middle school. So, they are embracing PBIS as being an instrument in telling you, the administrative, what we need within our schools in order for our students to be successfully educationally wise. So, thank you. I appreciate you.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, it looks like we've wrapped up our questions, and we thank you so much for the, and the work continues.
Thank you so much.
Second and final information item, we have Dr. Janneke, Director of Research and Evaluation, approaching the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the School Board, and Dr. Spence. I'm Heidi Janneke, Director of Research and Evaluation in the Office of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability. This evening, I will present data on advanced placement participation and performance, as well as participation and performance on college readiness assessments to include the PSAT, SAT, and ACT. We will begin our review with the advanced placement or AP information. The AP program provides high school students opportunities to take rigorous courses. Students who take the corresponding AP exam for the course and earn a qualifying score of three or higher may receive college credit depending on the policies of the institution where the student eventually enrolls. If for any reason there is not a Virginia Beach staff member available to provide instruction for an AP course, or not enough students to fill a particular course, students may take advantage of these AP course offerings through Virtual Virginia. During the 21-22 school year, VBCPS offered all 38 of the College Board's AP courses. All students interested in enrolling in an AP course are encouraged to do so. Students who might struggle due to the increased demands can meet with their AP teacher and arrange supports for the course, such as tutoring. The AP exams are optional and do have a fee associated with them. To increase student access, especially for student groups who are underrepresented in advanced coursework, VBCPS pays the exam fee for students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch. The Division has also partnered with two organizations, the National Math and Science Initiative and Equal Opportunity Schools. Both organizations are focused on providing students equitable learning opportunities by providing funding for AP exams and increasing student representation in advanced coursework. As a note, dual enrollment courses are another option for Virginia Beach students in 11th and 12th grades to earn college credit. Dual enrollment course options are often preferred by students because the attainment of college credit is not dependent on a qualifying AP exam score. Overall, 28% of Virginia Beach High School students were enrolled in at least one AP course during the 21-22 school year. When the percentage of students enrolled in AP courses last year was examined by student group, Asian students had the highest percentage of students enrolled at 51%, followed by white students at 34%. When the last five years of data were examined, all student groups showed a slight downward trend ranging from two percentage points for Asian students to eight percentage points for Hispanic students. Overall, there has been a decrease of seven percentage points in AP course enrollment since 1718. As noted on the previously slide, AP course participation is not the only opportunity students have to potentially earn college credit. Students may also participate in dual enrollment courses and receive college credit based on course performance. There has been a slight increase in the percentage of juniors and seniors taking dual enrollment courses from 9.8% in 7. of juniors and seniors taking dual enrollment courses from 9.8% in 1718 to 10.5% in 2122. The chart at the top of this slide displays the percentage of AP course enrollees who took at least one AP exam over the last five years. The percentage of students taking at least one AP exam had a slight downward trend from 75% in 2018 and 2019 to 56% in 2021, before a 12 percentage point increase to 68% in 2022. The chart at the bottom of the slide displays the percentage of AP course enrollees in each student group who took at least one AP exam in 2122. Asian students had the highest percentage of students taking an AP exam, followed by white students. Black students had the lowest percentage of AP course enrollees taking an AP exam. The chart on this slide displays the percentage of students scoring three or higher by student group for the last five years. The overall percentage of students scoring three or higher ranged from 55% in 2021 to 59% in 1718 and 1920. When examined by student group, black students had the lowest percentage of students scoring three or higher each year, and Asian students had the highest percentage scoring three or higher, followed by white students. The next portion of the presentation will focus on Participation and Performance on College Readiness Assessments, which will include the PSAT, SAT, and ACT. Before we examine these data, it is important to highlight the current trends with the assessments and the impact of the pandemic. As a reminder, prior to the pandemic, some colleges and universities discontinued the use of the ACT, SAT, and ACT as entrance requirements. The pandemic increased the number of schools not requiring the submission of assessment scores for admission. As of November 2022, 73% of the accredited institutions are test optional and 3% are test-free institutions. Although many universities like George Mason, James Madison, and Virginia Commonwealth no longer require the ACT or SAT for admissions purposes, many schools use test scores for scholarships, honors colleges, and specific academic programs. As a result, Virginia Beach Staff does recommend students take these assessments and supports them throughout the process to maximize post-secondary opportunities. The first college readiness assessment we will examine is the PSAT-NMSQT, National Merits Scholars Qualifying Test. The PSAT-NMSQT is a multiple-choice pencil and paper test created and administered by the College Board. It is offered to all grade 11 students each fall and paid for by the Division. There are three tests, reading, writing, and mathematics. Grade level, college, and career readiness benchmarks are provided for two sections, evidence-based reading and writing, or ERW, which is a combination of the reading and writing sections and mathematics. Students may opt in to having their information and scores shared with colleges and scholarship organizations. The chart on this slide displays the percentage of Virginia Beach students participating in the PSAT over the last five years. In 2021, participation in the test saw a significant decrease due to the pandemic. In 2122, participation returned to pre-pandemic participation levels. The PSAT data on this slide is from fall 2021. When comparing Virginia Beach test takers to test takers at the state and all PSAT test takers, a lower percentage of Virginia Beach students met the benchmarks when compared to the state and all test takers. Differences observed were larger in the area of math. This slide displays the percentage of 11th grade students meeting the benchmarks on the PSAT by student group. For the evidence-based reading and writing benchmark, multiracial, Asian, and white student groups had the highest percentages of students meeting benchmarks, while black students had the lowest percentage. In 11th grade, less than half of all student groups met the math benchmark. As a quick overview of the next college readiness assessment, the SAT is a multiple-choice pencil and paper test created and administered by the College Board, typically taken in the spring of a student's 11th grade year or the fall of the senior year. The SAT is administered on Saturdays at various Virginia Beach High Schools. Students are responsible for paying all fees for the tests and providing their own transportation to and from the testing location. Financial assistance for the SAT is available through fee waivers provided by the College Board. Individual schools and students can also request additional financial assistance through the Access College Foundation. The SAT contains three tests, reading, writing, and math, with an optional fourth essay section. The chart on this slide displays the percentage of VBCPS graduates who took the SAT over the last five years. Since the class of 2018, the percentage of students taking the SAT has decreased 21 percentage points to 41% for the class of 2022. As a reminder from earlier in the presentation, this may be due to the fact that some colleges and universities have discontinued the use of the SAT and ACT as entrance requirements. The table at the bottom of the slide displays characteristics of SAT test takers for the class of 2022, for Virginia Beach, public schools in Virginia, and the total group of SAT test takers. The numbers in the table represent the demographic characteristics for only those students who took the SAT. For example, 1,977 Virginia Beach students in the class of 2022 took the SAT. Of these students, 188 or 9% were Asian. Compared to the total group, Virginia Beach had a higher percentage of black, white, and multiracial students who took the SAT. Data for Virginia Beach test takers were similar to Virginia Public School test takers. Because of this, comparisons on the next few slides will focus on Virginia Beach and Virginia Public School data. However, data for the total group is included for reference. The chart on this slide displays the percentage of students by student group meeting the evidence-based reading and writing benchmark on the SAT for Virginia Beach, public schools in Virginia, and all SAT test takers. When compared to the state, Virginia Beach had a higher percentage of students across all student groups meeting the benchmark. This chart displays the percentage of students by student group meeting the math benchmark on the SAT. Compared to the state, Virginia Beach had slightly lower percentages of students meeting math benchmarks across all student groups. Differences ranged from one percentage point for Hispanic students to six percentage points for Asian students. The final college readiness assessment we will examine is the ACT. The ACT is a standardized multiple-choice pencil and paper test administered by ACT on Saturdays at various Virginia Beach High Schools. Students are responsible for paying all fees for the tests and providing their own transportation to and from the testing location. Financial assistance is available through fee waivers provided by ACT. Individual schools and students can also request additional financial assistance through the Access College Foundation. The current version of the ACT includes multiple-choice tests in English, math, reading, and science, plus an optional writing test. The chart on this slide displays the percentage of Virginia Beach graduates who took the ACT over the last five years. Since the class of 2018, there has been a downward trend in the percentage of students taking the ACT, from 16% for the class of 2018 to 5% for the class of 2022. The table at the bottom of the slide displays the characteristics of ACT test takers for the class of 2022, for VBCPS, public schools in Virginia, and the total group of test takers. The numbers in the table represent the demographic characteristics for only those students who took the test. VBCPS had a larger percentage of black and multiracial students take the ACT compared to public schools in Virginia and the total group. The chart on this slide displays the percentage of students meeting ACT benchmarks by section for all Virginia Beach test takers and by student group. By section, 80% of Virginia Beach students met the English benchmark, 65% met the reading benchmark, 56% met the math benchmark, and 56% met the science benchmark. On all sections of the ACT, black students had the lowest percentage of students meeting the benchmarks, and Asian students had the highest percentage meeting the benchmarks. This chart displays the percentage of students by student group that met the English benchmark on the ACT for VBCPS, all public schools in Virginia, and all ACT test takers. When examined by student group, Virginia Beach had a higher percentage of white students meeting the English benchmark when compared to the state and all test takers. Asian students were equal to the state and higher than all test takers. Overall, for all test takers, Virginia Beach students had higher percentages of students meeting the English benchmark compared to all test takers, but lower percentages than public schools in Virginia. In reading, Virginia Beach had higher percentages of Asian, Hispanic, and multiracial students meeting the reading benchmark when compared to the state and all ACT test takers. For black and white students in the Division, the percentage of students meeting the reading benchmark was lower compared to public schools in Virginia, but higher when compared to all test takers. Overall, Virginia Beach students had higher percentages of students meeting the reading benchmark when compared to all test takers, but lower percentages than public school students in Virginia. For most student groups, a similar pattern of results was observed for mathematics, as well as for the area of science. As a brief summary of the presentation, 28% of high school students were enrolled in an AP course, and of those students, 68% took at least one AP exam. 57% of the AP exams attempted received a score of three or higher. The table on the slide displays a summary of the participation rates, percent meeting benchmarks, and patterns by student group for the PSAT, SAT, and ACT. Participation rates were highest on the PSAT at 81%. The SAT had a lower participation rate of 41%, but had higher percentages of students meeting the evidence-based reading and writing and mathematics benchmarks compared to the PSAT assessment. The ACT had the lowest participation rate at 5%. Patterns by student group are noted on the slide. For the PSAT, a majority in each student group met the evidence-based reading and writing benchmarks, with the exception of black students. Asian students had the highest percentage meeting the math benchmark at 48%. For the SAT and ACT, a consistent pattern showed that black students were less likely to meet benchmarks, but they were one of the few student groups to perform better than their state counterparts on the SAT and the same as their state counterparts on the ACT. At this time, Mrs. Angela Siders, Executive Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning, will share what VBCPS is doing to support students and schools in these areas.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Janneke. There are a variety of supports that we will continue to provide students and focus on ensuring that students are aware of and know how to access these supports as they prepare for college coursework and assessments. I have highlighted several on the slide, including Khan Academy. Students are able to use this resource by linking their College Board accounts after taking the PSAT, which gives them access to individualized practice and progress reports. Research shows that students that have used Khan Academy practice at least 20 hours have an average score gain of 115 points on the SAT. Our next support is FEV Tutor, which is a program that allows students to have one-to-one tutoring and content area courses. Students or parents may contact fev.com or access through class link. Customer support is available 24 hours a day. Sessions may be scheduled by student, teacher, or parent, or on-demand for quick question or support with homework. FEV Tutor may also be used to support preparation for SAT. Another support is provided in partnership with our National Math and Science Initiative, otherwise known as NEMZI, the grant with our Title IV. Through this support, students can log in through Blackboard to participate in modules based on key course topics. Modules include instruction, videos, and test preparation. Live chats with AP readers will be available in the spring before testing. We are excited to have these new online study sessions for all of our high school students. We also have online Khan Academy SAT Summer Prep Course that students can access in the summer on our VB Schools website. Another support, No Red Ink, is a program that focuses on writing, editing, and grammar instruction. This program contains lessons specifically targeted towards the SOL, SAT, and ACT tests, and they're available to all our secondary students. It is currently used in secondary English classrooms to support writing, editing, and grammar instruction. In addition to these supports, there are several strategies in the Division's recently adopted Equity Plan that we will be implementing for the express purpose of increasing access, preparation, and success in advanced coursework and programs, including the importance of coursework students take in the middle school. We believe that implementing these strategies will result in improved outcomes for our students. We also plan to engage our high school principals and staff, as well as students, in data-driven inquiry sessions focused on the data shared in this presentation to identify challenges and opportunities for improvement as it relates to student participation and performance in college-level coursework and readiness assessments. And finally, the Office of Research and Evaluation will conduct a research study to aid in the understanding of the likely multiple factors that are related to the pattern of results for these college readiness measures over the years. This concludes the presentations, and we are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I'll go ahead. So it's, life is full of ironies. I began my tenure on school board with one of my missions, ACT testing and boosting our participation rate. And here I am, eight years later, leaving with seeing it after increasing being down to 5%. So all joking aside, and I'll repeat the personal reason that I bring this up. One of my two children scored exceptionally, I mean, an outstanding student, but scored exceptionally higher on the ACT. There's no question it made him eligible for more, for certain scholarships he wouldn't have otherwise have been and possibly even was a component in certain college admissions. So the ACT has a science component. That's one thing that makes it unique. Can we be assured that at lea, but it shouldn't be limited to this, but at least our academy students who are attending academies with a science component are being encouraged to take it? So that's, and I don't necessarily look for an answer tonight, but I would, that would be my hope. I know it's an extra test for families, but there are the same fee waivers for those, you know, need-based waivers. But in my view, and I know that private schools do this, we should be promoting or encouraging kids to take both tests because they are, there is a difference. I know now, it seems a few years ago, I first learned that the difference is not as great as it was, but the SAT was the aptitude test and the ACT was the achievement test. So particularly if you're a parent who feels that aptitude tests are not reflecting your child's classroom achievement, because that was our case, then by all means, you know, consider the ACT. So it was part question, part comment.
But yes, we will make sure to put that on the agenda and promote that. Thank you, Mrs. Rye.
And Mrs. Manning?
Yeah, just one question. I know a lot of college programs don't accept a score of a three for college credit for their courses. Can you give me a percentage of students who scored four or higher?
I'll turn that over to Dr. Jan.
I don't have that with me right now, but I can get that for you. We do have the data disaggregated by each individual.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Okay, that seems to be it. Oh, Ms. Owens.
Sorry. I just have a couple. In terms of the AP courses versus the dual enrollment courses, is there a reason, and I may be misspeaking, do we offer weighted credit to the dual enrollment classes like we do the AP credits? And if not, is there a reason?
They get, they will get college credit if they get a certain grade, so they can transfer to certain colleges with the dual enrollment.
Okay. And with the AP course, if they pass the exam, they can also do that, plus get the weighted credit in our school?
Yes. Remember, all colleges don't take the, some colleges don't take the AP, some do, but it depends on the classes.
So your question's a good one, Ms. Owens.
Sounds like it's both college.
Yep. It's one the board has had.
Yep, it's one the board has had some conversation about in the past, although not a lot during my time here. There are school divisions across the country that do weighting in all kinds of different ways. So, you've got some that wait for honors courses in addition to college-level coursework, some that will only wait for AP, not IB, some that will wait for AP, IB, dual enrollment. So, really, honestly, it's a board policy discussion about how you all want to view weighted courses. And administration can probably walk you through some of the reasons those decisions have been made relative to weighting different classes. What's important and interesting to think about and talk about is what happens when those GPAs head up to the colleges, right? So, the GPA looks good, but what happens, because everybody weights things differently, is they just re-center it all down to a 4.0. So, if you got an A, you got a 4.0. If you didn't get an A, it's below that. They don't give you weighting, but they do pref, they do, in their admissions reviews, most admissions counselors will tell you, they do want to see that you've taken the most rigorous coursework you're capable of taking. And that can include, obviously, like dual enrollment, IB, AP coursework. And I think a lot of times, school divisions will put weighting where they think colleges are going to look for the preference in coursework, right? And so, traditionally, that's been AP classes. We're seeing that shift. We're seeing a lot of preference now for dual enrollment courses and a lot more acceptance of dual enrollment courses across the state, for example, for college credit. So, probably worth a revisit with the school board on, as a policy discussion on weighting. And we don't have space for it in the next quarterly forecast, but we'll make a note, maybe, to add that, just as a workshop conversation to start in the fourth quarter forecast.
Excellent. I would welcome just the conversation and just to explore where we are and what things may have changed.
It's a very fair question.
Okay. My other question was just kind of in terms of the breakdown of test takers by, by race and ethnicity. Are there options on the tests for students to decline to identify? And how does that impact what we're seeing here?
There is an option for a no response or to not identify. It's typically a smaller number, but we do look at that when we look at our distributions to see if it's a large number where we can't be confident of the groups. But yes, there is some of that in there.
Okay. And I was just considering that there may be certain groups who are less comfortable identifying on their tests because of suspicions or concerns of what the information is being used for, and so if that is impacting some of the numbers that we're seeing. But, thank you.
On? Yeah, there I am. We, in the PPMC meeting, I remember asking you the question, even though some universities in college are waiving not taking the PSATs and SATs, remind me, did you also, you were still continuing encouraging the students to take these tests as well? Did you mention that as well? And Dr. Jameson mentioned that he talked on it as well, because not knowing, but you will, you are continuing encouraging the students to take them as well.
Yes, that's correct. Virginia Beach staff does recommend that students take the assessments for potential scholarship opportunities or various programs.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, looks like we're good. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Consent Agenda item, Agenda Item 17. The following items are presented. A, the Resolution for National Mentoring Month, which will be read. B, Achieve 3,000 Comprehensive Evaluation. C, Recommendation of General Contractor for Ocean Lakes High School Press Box Replacement. D, or the Policy Review Committee Recommendations, or Recommendation, excuse me, which is Policy 611, referenced earlier this evening, instructional materials with sexually explicit content, and the, the added item E, School Board Member Resolutions. So, motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Mrs. Franklin, in a second. Mrs. Manning, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote. The motion did pass.
Thank. Yes. Thank you.
Resolution, National Mentoring Month, January 2023. Whereas January 2023 will mark the 21st anniversary of National Mentoring Month, an opportunity to focus attention on the need for mentors, as well as how each of us can work together to increase the number of mentors, to help ensure positive outcomes for our young people. Whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools honors volunteer mentors who support young people by showing up for them every day and demonstrating their commitment to helping them thrive. And whereas mentoring programs make our communities and our school divisions stronger by dividing, driving impactful relationships that increase social capital for young people and provide invaluable support networks for adults. And whereas mentoring plays a pivotal role in career exploration and supports workplace skills by helping young people set career goals, equipping mentors with the skills needed to support the professional growth of young people, and drives positive outcomes for young people and businesses. And whereas the annual African-American Male Summit on January 21, 2023, hosted by Tallwood High School, is an example of mentorship that promotes healthy relationships and communication, positive self-esteem, emotional well-being, and growth for our young men and their relationships with adults, both in our division and throughout the community. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach officially recognizes the month of January 2023 as National Mentoring Month. And be it further resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach encourage citizens to celebrate, elevate, and encourage mentoring across Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board, adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this 13th day of December 2022.
Thank you. Okay, action portion. Personnel Report Administrative Appointments, Motion to Approve. Mrs. Hughes, in a second. Mrs. Anderson, any discussion? Mrs. Manning?
Yeah, so, one of these positions that we are being asked to approve is a new position that's being created, a new upper-level administrator position. And I very often hear from community members across our city expressing their concerns with the number of high-level and high-paying positions that we have, especially with the decreasing student population. I sent an email to administration asking what the salary is for this position, whether or not it's being offset by the elimination of an equivalent position. I've not been given an answer to that, and so I'm wondering if someone has an answer to those two questions.
So, I can answer, it's not being offset by an equip, equivalent position that, and typically, we would make you aware if we were doing that, about the fiscal note. In this estimate of needs that was provided to the board during the adoption process for the current school year budget, we mentioned the emergency manager position. We also put that in there under the Budget Balancing Section on page 23 at the cost of $104,000, which I believe is inclusive of benefits.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear how much.
$104,000, which I believe is inclusive of benefits. And I know you got a note, the whole board was copied on the note, which included the information from Mr. Freeman about what the position would be doing.
Yeah, I received that.
Yeah. I understand the concern expressed, too, about new positions, why I try very hard to hold the line on that. This was one that we felt, given everything that we've been through over the last couple of years, and the evolving nature of school safety was incredibly important. And so, we wouldn't typically bring new central positions forward. I haven't typically done that outside of grant-funded positions, but this was one we discussed during the budget season, which is why it's now on the docket for hiring.
Okay. Yeah, and I just want to make clear, my opposition isn't toward the individual being hired. I think they're eminently qualified for the position. It's just the fact that a new higher-level position is just being created. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Anderson?
Dr. Spence, could you explain to the board and to the public the need for this new position? I, I have been told, but I think it behooves us to let the public know the reason why we need this position and know how important it is.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I can speak to it briefly. I'd ask Mr. Freeman, if he's here. I can't see out there, to be honest with you. He's coming down. Okay, I'll ask Mr. Freeman. He can talk a little bit about the position specifically and the role. Again, that's sort of evolves relative to emergency management in the city across our facilities. Jack?
Yes, thank you. So, the emergency manager position is very similar in function to the emergency management department that is in the city of Virginia Beach. So, with a school division this size, with responsibility for planning related to crisis and response related to crisis, and this goes from, we mentioned the security related, so there's many pieces related to security. There's also pieces that are related to how we respond to hurricanes, how we integrate with the city when we respond that, to that. As you know, we host shelters for that, so there's a piece of coordination related to shelters as well. There are many interrelated pieces to be able to, to bring different groups together, which is what the emergency management team does in order to make sure that the group can function in a crisis environment, and that involves planning upfront, and then the response and leading the response. So, very, I say analogous to what happens at the city level. That's a direct tie-in at the city level for what this, what this does. And you've seen in many different things, so when a weather event comes through, we're completely tied with the city, because if we have to stand up a, a shelter, we have to be integrated with the city to do that. We saw when we had the tragic event several years ago, they responded and they needed one of our facilities in order to be able to do reunification. So, it's all of those various functions that are planning for crises and responding to crisis, crises that this position is designed to do.
Right. We, we've been asked repeatedly by parents who are concerned about our emergency response and how we would react if we had a tragedy hit our city or our, any of our schools. And it's very important that we have someone who is ahead of that, who's ahead of that crisis team. I mean, you've heard, all of us have heard how inadequate certain schools, school systems have been, and we don't want to be caught in that position where we find that we're in, we inadequately don't have a lead response team, so.
Yes, ma'am. And to, to take that a step further, there's a, you know, we think about the response piece, there's an, there's entire spectrum that relates to this. So, one of the important pieces related to the emergency manager is also going to be a training piece, and the training happens at various levels. So, as you know, several years ago, prior to the pandemic, we were able to do what I'll call a large-force exercise, where you bring many different resources and you go through a what if something were to occur, to allow our police officers to train, to allow our first responders to train, to allow schools to participate in the training, to allow the senior, the leadership structure to walk through their steps of how they would respond. So, the training piece is another critical piece to this, that as we have moved out of the priority of all of the work done related to the pandemic, that we want to get back on a cycle of training where we and our partners that support the efforts in the community all have an opportunity to train up on a regular basis. Another critical part of this position.
Thank you.
Right. It appears we're ready to vote, so all in favor of the Personnel Report Administrative Appointments, kindly raise, show a raised hand.
We have 10 ayes.
All opposed, show a raised hand, please.
And we have one nay. The motion did pass.
Thank you. And Dr. Spence, you have new appointments to introduce to us.
Thank you. I certainly do. I'd like to start by asking Joshua Wilks to stand up. I think he's here. Yep. Mr. Wilks has served in the division since 2012 as a teacher at Great Neck Middle School, and we are pleased this evening that you have accepted our recommendation for him to serve as the next Assistant Principal at Lehigh Park Elementary School. Congratulations. Now, before you sit down, would you please introduce, I think you have some guests with you?
Yes, my wife, Jennifer Wilks, and my former supervisor, Mr. Thomas Quinn.
Could you both stand, please, so we could, the lighting is a little challenging. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to ask Chris Sprouse to please stand up. You all recognize Mr. Sprouse. He has served since 1985 in Virginia Beach as a bus driver in the Office of Transportation and Fleet Management Services, as an assistant supervisor in transportation in that same office, most recently has been serving as an area supervisor for transportation in the Office of Transportation and Fleet Management Services. And we're pleased this evening that you've accepted our recommendation for him to serve as the next coordinator of transportation in that same office. Congratulations. I believe you also have some guests with you.
My David, my grandson Kyle.
Congratulations. Thank you. And then finally, he is attending virtually because he is in Florida and making his final preparations to move here to Virginia Beach. I want to acknowledge Gustavo Vilches. Mr. Vilches has an extensive background in emergency management and emergency operations. He's been in a system of care liaison, a social worker, an emergency specialist, all in Broward County, Florida. He's been a special projects coordinator for Palm Beach County and the Division of Emergency Management for West Palm Beach, and most recently, has been serving as an emergency operations manager in St. Lucie County in the Division of Emergency Management. We're pleased this evening the board has accepted our recommendation for him to serve as the next emergency manager in the Office of Security and Emergency Management. Congratulations to him. And that is all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Action Item B, School Board Legislative Agenda for the upcoming General Assembly Session. Motion to approve, to entertain any discussion, Mrs. Haltz, in a second, Mrs. Riggs. All right. Is there any discussion? Or questions? All right then, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote. The motion did pass.
Thank you all. Item, Action Item C, Employee Compensation, Recruitment and Retention Incentive. Before I call for a motion to approve, and a second to open it up for any discussion, just, I just want to clarify that everybody got the, the updated staff recommendation so that you, you know what would be up for discussion, which, and Dr. Spence is here to correct me, but the recommend, the admin, recommendation, if you would share again.
Yeah, so the administrative recommendation, we just used the original recommendation to put forward to start the conversation with the board. That was the $1,000 for all FTE employees. The cost of that's approximately $11.6 million. And as a reminder to the board, Crystal's not here, she's representing us at City Council, but as a reminder to the board, that would be funded through the ESAR funds as part of the allowable recruitment and retention incentives.
So, motion to approve. Mrs. Haltz, in a second, Mrs. Melnick. Okay, discussion.
So, is this the one that is for January? I'm confused.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and could you, I, I, for some reason, your mic is not coming across real clear to us. We're having trouble hearing you.
Really?
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Much better, thank you.
My apologies. The recommendation would be that the school board take action this evening to provide a $1,000 bonus for all FTE employees, a cost of approximately $11.6 million, and that that, correct, would not be, obviously, given the timing of that, that would not happen in December, but that would happen in the January paychecks. That's funded by the ESAR funds, which would be, again, allowable under the recruitment and retention incentive part of that, those funds.
Any other questions or comments? All right then.
and retention incentive part of that, those funds.
Any other questions or comments? All right then, I'm all in favor.
I have, I, I'm sorry. I would like to make a substitute motion that we provide a thousand dollars for all classroom teachers and five hundred dollars for all other employees, and the additional money goes toward tutors to benefit our students.
Is there a second?
Miss, Miss Weems just.
Okay, Mrs. Weems, discussion? Franklin?
I have a question. So, Dr. Spence, will you just clarify, does that mean then positions like the occupational therapist and physical therapist would not get the thousand? Is that, can you be just clear on?
That's correct. Essentially, the only people in, who would get the thousand in that position would be classroom teachers and specialists and school counselors.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Anything else before we vote? Mrs. Hughes?
Is, every bit of this is coming out of ESER money, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And do we already provide any tutoring out of this?
We do. We have a significant tutoring program. We've shared that a few times. So, we have the FEV tutoring program. We also have in-person tutoring. We have tutors who are working side-by-side with our substitute teachers in some cases. We have tutors who are working side-by-side with our regular teachers. So, there's a number of different tutoring venues that we're already providing through the ESER funds.
And then all of the ESER money is use it or lose it. We have a, what is the deadline on this money?
This is twenty twenty-four.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Manning?
And we've also offered bonuses for employees through ESER funds just this past, this month, correct, they're getting?
So, the, I'd have to go back and check the second half of the funding on that, but all SOQ-funded positions came from the state. So, non-SOQ positions, we did move forward with funding for that, but I'd have to go back and check and see where that came from. I suspect it's probably grant-funded, but I don't want to say.
Right. But they're, all employees are getting a thousand dollar bonus as well from this year.
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, then, the substitute motion that's on the floor, repeat, repeat it, Mrs. Manning, please.
One thousand dollars for all classroom teachers, five hundred dollars for all other employees, and the additional funds goes toward tutoring for our students.
All in favor, show a raised hand, please.
We have one eye.
All opposed, a raised hand, please.
And we have ten nays, the motion failed.
So, now we'll revert back to a vote on the original motion. All in favor of one thousand dollars for all FTE employees, did I word that correctly, Dr. Spence?
Yes, ma'am.
Please show a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote. The motion did pass.
Action item D, policy review committee recommendations. So, just like what happened about a month ago, I'm going to propose, because these are bylaws, and that's why they're listed for action, but we can vote to approve all of them together, but this is the chance now if you want anything pulled out for discussion among these bylaws. Miss, go ahead.
Just want to reiterate that there is no change to the way the existing bylaws are. If there were a change, we would need to have seven votes in favor, but since there's no change, you know, there's, well, they're just Scrivener changes, they're not, they're really, right.
There were no, Kami, you can confirm, but there were no significant changes to the bylaws. They were largely Scrivener.
There were, I would call them Scrivener grammatical or sometimes formatting. There was one where we significantly, we flipped one paragraph up to a second paragraph. We were changing titles from the school board, the city county, city attorney to the school board attorney, the internal auditor became the school board auditor. I would not say there were any significant changes to anything here. There might have been, I know there was one where we added a missing two lines, having, that were in state law that had not been in there before, but other than that, I would not consider them significant changes.
So, I call for a motion to approve all the PRC recommendations with one vote. Mrs. Riggs, in a second. Mrs. Franklin, all in favor, show a raised hand, please. And this would be, to be clear, bylaw number one, bylaw one twenty-five through, through eighteen is bylaw one forty-eight, and then there's two appendices, A and B. So, with that, Mrs. Riggs, do you want to repeat your approval of the motion? Okay. And a second, Mrs. Anderson, please show your approval with a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote. The motion did pass.
Thank you. So, close to the finish line with committee organization or board reports. Who would like to start? Mrs. Riggs?
The Sister City Youth Ambassador for this past year, for twenty twenty-two, Lucia Morton, was introduced to the city council tonight, so I just wanted to let everybody know that they finally got to meet her tonight, so.
I'll just take this opportunity to thank the members of the governance committee for the, the fine work this year. There were a number of significant responsibilities, not the least of which was the development of the legal department, and we were often the initial vetting level before information came before the full board. And there were also changes to the superintendent contract and, and providing a forum for the retreat planning, which went so well. And, you know, I could, I could mention a few other things as well, but just wanted to throw out that, that thank you. So, final call on anything else before we read into closed session? Then I'll ask Mrs. Melnick to, to proceed with the reading.
I move that the school board recess into closed session in accordance with exceptions to open meeting law set forth in Code of Virginia, section two point two dash three seven one-one, to deliberate on the following matters. One, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, an evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions of higher education where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. Seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meetings would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter, namely to discuss, one, status of certain personnel matters, two, appointment of an administrator, three, pending or probable litigation matters. And I made the motion.
In a second, Mrs. Franklin, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote.
And the clerk has informed me we are moving to room six oh three, otherwise known as the new Einstein lab, for the closed session. And I have these for you to sign.
Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section two point two dash three seven one-two D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only, oh, such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting were convened were heard, discussed, or considered. I need a motion.
Motion to approve, Mrs. Hughes, in a second. Mrs. Anderson, all in favor, a raised hand, please.
Seconded by, here we go. No, seconded by, definitely.
Madam Chair, we have unanimous vote.
All right, you can sign that. Okay, here we go. Last thing. Whereas the school board met on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, to consider the recommendation of the school board audit committee to hire Karen Woodson, interim director of the Department of Internal Audit, as the school board internal auditor, and whereas the school board approves hiring Karen Woodson as the school board internal auditor effective December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and whereas the school board, and whereas the school board directs the chair of the school board audit committee and the superintendent or designate to make all necessary arrangements to complete the hiring process for Karen Woodson, and to make arrangements to fill the remaining vacancy in the Department of Internal Audit. I'm not doing that. Adopted by the school board of the city of Virginia Beach this thirteenth day of December twenty twenty-two. Motion to approve.
Mrs. Roy, can you adjourn the meeting?
I don't even have, motion, formal meeting officially adjourned. Good night, everybody.